We would like to call the combined meeting tonight, Step Session Regular Meeting for January 12th. As the record show, that all board members are present in California. Dr. John Williams is traveling, so safe travels for him. This time I turn it over to Mr. Hall, Stephen, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Good evening to everyone. Tonight is a pleasure to introduce you to a few young people who represent the more than 700 SPS middle school students who are participating in a new activity thanks to your support for expanded Misha activities. Tonight we have Tatum Burnett, Dana Daniels, come on up, Thomas Fawcett, and Sarah Shelton. Go ahead and come on up and stand right up here so the board can see you, please. Thank you. These students are members of the Pipkin Middle School Archery Team, and they are among students from all nine middle schools who have been competing in archery tournaments this month. We are so pleased that this new activity for middle school students has been so popular with students. We want to acknowledge the board's support for this and other efforts to expand opportunities for middle school students to participate in extracurricular activities. Pipkin's archery team has 45 students who participate regularly. Principal Becky Ash said archery has been a great addition to the athletic program because it gives students who might not otherwise participate on a court or field an opportunity to get engaged. Let us tell you a little more about these Pipkin students and why they were selected to represent their school and the archery program at tonight's meeting. So as I introduce you, if you'll just raise your hand for a second. Tatum is a pirate who tries her hardest and doesn't give up easily in class. Even when the task is challenging, she is kind and compassionate toward both her peers and her teachers. Dana loves to shoot her bow and is an excellent shot. She is a very hard worker who lights up when she gets the opportunity to compete. Thomas stands up for himself and for others. He carries on intelligent conversations and relates well with both his peers and adults. He participates in class, asking questions about the topic at hand that help others continue to think and learn. And finally, Sarah is a bright light in her class. Her joy and enthusiasm for learning shine far beyond the classroom. She continually pushes herself and others to dig deeper, to master challenging concepts. So let's also take a moment to acknowledge their family members, principal, and other members of the Pipkin team who are present tonight. Please stand so that we may recognize all of you. So at this time, I ask all that are able to please rise as Tatum, Dana, Thomas, and Sarah lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, whenever you're ready.
(Inaudible)
So now we'll move on to our honoring excellence. And tonight, we want to recognize the winners of the Martin Luther King Jr. Art Contest. In partnership with the Springfield NAACP, each year Springfield Public Schools hosts a variety of events that focus on the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. One of those activities involves our students in creating artwork that reflects a specific theme. This year, that theme was "We Stand for Justice." Tonight, we have with us several of the 2018 award winners, and as you can see, their outstanding artwork is on display for us all to appreciate. These winners were recognized during a ceremony at the Gallois Theater on January 15th, and I would like to introduce those who were able to attend this evening. So if you're here tonight, would you please join me at the podium? We have Amani Robinson, a freshman at Kickapoo High School; Ajana Chambers, a fifth grader from Williams Elementary School; Nyla Graves, a fourth grader at Sunshine Elementary School; and Lexa Boyd, a first grader at Williams Elementary School. So would you go and stand by the artwork that you created? Fantastic. Let's give them all a hand. Fantastic. We also like to mention Mallory Roderick, a student at Carver Middle School. She was the winner of the essay contest this year. So we want to acknowledge Mrs. Marty Moore and her outstanding team, the many teachers and the other staff who support the program and the students who participate. We'll also move on to partner recognition, another signature event that coincides... Oh, yes.
Do we have parents here?
Absolutely.
I think we know who they are, but...
Parents of the contest and the artwork winners, would the parents please stand?
Or family, or whoever.
That's great. Thank you all for being here. Another signature event that coincides with the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day is the Springfield Multicultural Festival. This year was the 21st annual event which symbolizes a longstanding partnership Springfield Public Schools has with Mr. Samuel Knox and Unite Publication. Tonight, we would like to honor Mr. Knox for his steadfast commitment to this event and for the positive impact it has made on the more than 1,500 participants each year. The festival celebrates the visual and performing arts of various cultures and serves as a community resource to empower participants with information about employment, healthcare, financial, educational, and business resources. Please join me in thanking Mr. Samuel Knox for his leadership and dedication which make this event such a success each year. Mr. Knox. So now we would like to celebrate one of our employees recently celebrated as part of our district-wide Power of One initiative. Power of One continues to shine a spotlight on SPS employees who go above and beyond to make an impact on the lives of our children. So here is our January Power of One story.
I knew since I was a sophomore in high school that I wanted to work with kids at school. My mom was a teacher, and it's pretty much all I've ever wanted to do. My name is Shannon Holt, and I'm a counselor here at York Elementary. I'm from Dodge City, Kansas. I came to Missouri State, which was southwest Missouri State University at the time, and I majored in music. I did teach music for four years, and then I transitioned to counseling because I would have students come into my classroom who were frustrated or upset, and I didn't have
our district, and we're so thankful for her important work.
time to talk with them, and it just really was frustrating for me not to be able to
So finally, this is Missouri School Board Recognition Week, and we have one final video
help them in any way and not to have time to even talk with them.
When I first came to this school, she was pretty much the first person that I met.
presentation to help with this special recognition tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jaleel.
She's nice, and what she does, like she helps students.
Thank you, Mrs. Jill Patterson.
I describe her sweet, caring.
Thank you, Dr. Lena Lena.
She's very helpful.
Thank you, Dr. Denise Frederick.
My goal for my students is that they would set high goals for themselves and that they
Thank you, Mrs. Bruce Linder.
won't give up when they encounter obstacles.
Thank you, Mrs. Tim O'Beir.
I really try to model for my students the kind of behaviors that I want to see in them,
Thank you, Dr. Charles Taylor.
That was excellent.
and I really would like to see them being kind and compassionate towards each other.
Really nice.
So the children that you just saw in that special video are kindergarteners from Harrison
I just try to do that, and I try to show them how to be compassionate towards others.
So it is our pleasure to introduce you to Shannon Holt, the counselor at York Elementary Elementary, and in addition to expressing their gratitude on video, these students are the artists who created the homemade nameplate especially for each of you tonight. School.
I always wanted to see it.
So while we appreciate your volunteer service every day, Missouri School Board Recognition Week is a special opportunity to publicly say thank you for all that you do on behalf of our students, our staff, and this community. And to help us say thanks, we are joined by Holland Elementary School teacher Stalina Snyder and her fifth grade students Amelia Brisi and Diobani Delgado. They have a special presentation to wrap this up this evening.
So as a fifth grade teacher, we study the book Wonder by RJ Palacio. If you've not read it, I recommend it. They also have a movie that's out. But in the book, one of the teachers really tries to instill in his kids the idea of looking at precepts and inspirational quotes and trying to live by those. So this year, we have kind of looked at quite a few of them, and we've chosen some, and they've created their own artwork along with a letter of thanks for all of the work that you do, and we're going to share two of them today.
Thank you for giving your time and effort to help Springfield Public Schools. You have helped us a lot. I choose this quote, "Everyone in the world should get a scanning ovation because we all overcomeeth the world," by Augie from Wonder by RJ Palacio. Because I think people should be praised at least once in their life. I think it relates to you because you have been praised and you have helped us. All I'm trying to say is thank you. Sincerely, Amelia.
Thank you for helping us in other public schools in Springfield. I chose this quote, "It's not enough to be friendly. You have to be a friend," by Charlotte Cody. Because you are all friends or friendly to the public school in Springfield, I think it means that being friendly to someone is not enough. Being a friend means that you can help them more. You are important to kids that need help in Springfield. Thank you for all the support. From Diobani.
It helps that I got to meet with them ahead of time, so I'm done crying. They're fantastic, and I love the book, as I've said eight times. Thank you.
I'm going to try not to pull a Jill here, but...
That means he's going to try not to cry for all of you that don't know what that means.
The...I've gone around to a lot of boards the last couple of weeks, and one of the things I keep talking about is a lot of times we, as board members, deal with touchy subjects, tough issues, things that aren't fun sometimes. But the opportunity to go to a classroom or see paintings like this, see kids come up like this, I can't speak for everybody, but that's why we do what we do. And it just...I told somebody one time, if you play golf, it's like the last hole, you hit a 300-yard drive, even though the one before that you hit in the water. You kind of forget that one, and it brings you back. And that's why seeing these kids, seeing that, thank you so much for doing that, and that's what makes it worthwhile, to spend the time, so...
Can I add something?
Yes.
So things like this are okay, but we love stuff like this. That's totally awesome. Thank you.
Denise Selena, anybody else?
Yeah, just real quickly, and just to say that this last week's been kind of a busy week. I left on Friday, drove to Columbia for an MSBA, all afternoon meeting and evening, and an all-day Saturday back home, and then a board meeting last night, a board meeting tonight, and all-day Wednesday in Jeff City. And sometimes I stop and ask myself, I'm supposed to be retired, what am I doing here? And I just got a big answer. And it's that little kindergartner saying thank you, and then the students that just read what they read, and the kids here and the parents say thank you. So my question is it. Again.
And we should also add, you don't have to be polite. You're wonderful, you were acknowledged, and you don't have to stay if you don't want to. That's the benefit of being a superstar. We're staying. We're not superstars. Though I am tempted to get annoyed.
We love archery. Lori made an archery in high school. I've talked to several of those little schools that are doing archery, and they love it.
Hold that for me, Asia.
Just give them an opportunity. It's all just an opportunity.
I can't look at you. I thought I'd like to, I just can't.
I got it now. Now I'm crying.
This is doing too bad to the kindergarteners anymore. It was okay up to that.
We're left with people who aren't happy with us. These are loud mics tonight.
They are. Okay, we'll move on now to the rest of our agenda. We got the good stuff done, so the fun stuff. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion by Lena, do you hear her second?
Second.
Second by Charles. Okay, thank you. Agenda is approved. Moving on to item number two, public comments with respect to agenda items. We do have one tonight, and let me remind the speakers that the board welcomes comments from the audience and the issues being discussed. It's recommended that the requests be submitted prior to the meeting, which they have. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and be timed. You'll see the timers up on the screen. It's inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the school or in the district office. And it is typically the process, there's no discussion with the speaker and the board, but we will listen and hear your comments, so I want you to understand that for sure. Our first speaker is Victoria Batchelder. Did I abuse it, or did I do it wrong?
Batchelder.
Batchelder, okay. Sorry.
Thank you. Hi, I am Victoria Batchelder. My husband and I are graduates of Springfield Public Schools. I'm a parent of four Springfield Public School students ranging from ages third grade through 12. I'm also a fellow educator. I hold a K-12 certificate from Missouri State. I'm here today to voice some of our family's concerns regarding the upcoming freshman academy system. I know there'll be a presentation later in the agenda. I was told I couldn't ask questions afterwards, so I'll be voicing some questions now. I don't expect any answers. I just hope that you can answer them later. Thank you. The first concern is that my children's academic choices are being limited. For example, will future freshmen have a choice not to participate in the academy system? Why not make the academies optional like Kickapoo University and Quest at Glendale High School? Can 14-year-olds really be expected to pick a career choice and follow it through four years with only one or two chances to change their minds? In having the choice to not participate in a career tracking program at Kickapoo, my oldest daughter was able to take choir, chamber choir, and drama all four years of high school and will graduate with one year of college completed. She's had countless opportunities for leadership and mentorship and still had the freedom to choose her academic path. Ultimately, she now has the freedom to choose her own career path as well. Will my other three kids have the same freedom? More and more colleges are looking for students who have participated in the arts, especially performing and communication arts due to the growing need in our technologically focused society for good communicators in the workforce. Will there be a performing arts or fine arts academy for students like my two daughters? I have also heard from faculty that, and I quote, "We want to keep people from Springfield in Springfield." So a career path will be offered based on the career demographics of the Springfield area. What if I have a child who aspires to live and work in a different demographic? How will the academy system accommodate that student? Research shows that each academy will have student limits. What if I have a student who wants to participate in a particular area of study, but the academy is full because some students who didn't really know what they wanted to study decided to go to the same academy as their peers, effectively taking my child's spot? What will my student be offered at that point? In your report that's coming up on the academy system, you reference Nashville schools and how well this system works to increase their graduation rates. I found their graduation rates overall were only in the 67% range. None of our high schools are even close to that low of a graduation rate. I understand there have been other districts with high graduation rates similar to Springfield Public Schools who have tried the academy system. What was the result of the academy system in those communities, and will you be forthcoming with that data in the future? The report also mentions that no intended impact on the arts and extracurriculars will be...let's see. There will be no intended impact on the arts and extracurriculars by the freshman seminar. It's clear that the intent of the freshman seminar courses is to move forward with the academy system. No one spends these kind of resources without that end in mind. If the assessment's favorable for the seminar pilot, what measures will be implemented to protect the arts and extracurriculars from the impact of the academies? It's one thing to not intend to hurt, it's another thing to seek to protect. The report also states the freshman seminar is not designed to track students into a specific career path, nor is it designed to limit accelerated options. In the full academy system, how do you intend to keep my child from being tracked into a career or be limited in accelerated options? What safeguard are there to protect the student's educational and career choices? In other words, will my student eventually be tracked into a career choice, and will that career choice be dictated by career options only in the Springfield demographic area? As you can see, we have not really gotten to the heart of the real impact of the academy system and the impact on teachers, students, and families of Springfield, Missouri. As concerned parents who care about our kids' futures and educational choices and freedoms, as parents who see the impact that caring arts teachers have made on our kids, we would ask that our students' educational and career choices not be limited by the academy system in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda. Items four, which is contracts, agreements, and change orders; five, personnel elections; and three, approval of minutes, I skipped that one. I would entertain a motion to approve those three consent agenda items. Don't move. Motion by Charles. Do you hear her second?
Second.
Second by Jill. Motion passes. Treasures Report, December.
Good evening. We have provided you with our standard reports for the month, and I would like to highlight for you a couple of items. The Treasures Report Items of Interest document also covers some of these. For your information, the budget amendment is for the period December 6th through January 18th, and we have grant revenues and expenditures that are...the budgets are being aligned to the actuals that have been received. And also, there is an increase for the early childhood special education lease portion for January through June that was a correction to the original budget. The big change is for the debt service fund, and that's for the revenue and expenditure relative to the refinancing that was finalized in the month of December. As a reminder, that was a principal issuance of $98,795,000 that saved the district overall over the life of that debt, $9.7 million in interest fees. And again, it refinanced the Series 2010A, B, and D, 2013 and 2014A, and we received a very nice interest rate at 2.75% on those bonds. The fund balance percentage for the operating account remains stable. We are presenting with this budget amendment a slight change from 17.08% to 17.03%. And otherwise, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those and go into more detail.
Questions for Carol. Not a...I'd entertain a motion to approve the Treasures Report. Don't move. Motion by Tim. Do you hear her second? Second by Denise. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to item 7.01, Hiring Process Update. Penny?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm proud and pleased tonight to share with you all a very brief update on our hiring processes for both Explore 2018 and the upcoming school year. As you all know, but some of our visitors may not know, we hire year-round. We are always looking for great employees to come join our team, and our year-round hiring really focuses on transportation, food service, our custodial maintenance, paraprofessionals. And so if any of you are interested, and if you know of anyone who's interested, we are hiring for those positions, and that is a year-round process. But this time of year particularly, we begin to focus on our certificated hiring for the upcoming school year as well as our Explore hiring for the summer school session. And our team in HR, we've been working collaboratively with the learning team to find opportunities to streamline some of those processes, to build in some efficiencies, and to do some earlier hiring to help us ensure that we attract the most highly qualified candidates for those positions. And so very briefly, I wanted to let you know where we are in that process. We do have one tonight, and let me remind the speakers that the board welcomes comments from the audience in the issues being discussed. It's recommended that the requests be submitted prior to the meeting, which they have. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and be timed. You'll see the timers up on the screen. It's inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the school or in the district office. And it is typically the process there, there's no discussion with the speaker and the board, but we will listen and hear your comments. So I want you to understand that for sure. Our first speaker is Victoria Batchelder. Did I abuse it, or did I do?
Batchelder.
Batchelder, okay. Sorry.
Thank you. Hi, I am Victoria Batchelder. My husband and I are graduates of Springfield Public Schools. I'm a parent of four Springfield Public School students ranging from ages third grade through 12. I'm also a fellow educator. I hold a K-12 certificate from Missouri State. I'm here today to voice some of our family's concerns regarding the upcoming freshman academy system. I know there'll be a presentation later in the agenda. I was told I couldn't ask questions afterwards, so I'll be voicing some questions now. I don't expect any answers. I just hope that you can answer them later. Thank you. The first concern is that my children's academic choices are being limited. For example, will future freshmen have a choice not to participate in the academy system? Why not make the academies optional like Kickapoo University and Quest at Glendale High School? Can 14-year-olds really be expected to pick a career choice and follow it through four years with only one or two chances to change their minds? In having the choice to not participate in a career tracking program at Kickapoo, my oldest daughter was able to take choir, chamber choir, and drama all four years of high school and will graduate with one year of college completed. She has had countless opportunities for leadership and mentorship and still had the freedom to choose her academic path. Ultimately, she now has the freedom to choose her own career path as well. Will my other three kids have the same freedom? More and more colleges are looking for students who have participated in the arts, especially performing and communication arts, due to the growing need in our technologically focused society for good communicators in the workforce. Will there be a performing arts or fine arts academy for students like my two daughters? I have also heard from faculty that, and I quote, "We want to keep people from Springfield in Springfield." So a career path will be offered based on the career demographics of the Springfield area. What if I have a child who aspires to live and work in a different demographic? How will the academy system accommodate that student? Research shows that each academy will have student limits. What if I have a student who wants to participate in a particular area of study, but the academy is full because some students who didn't really know what they wanted to study decided to go to the same academy as their peers, effectively taking my child's spot? What will my student be offered at that point? In your report that's coming up on the academy system, you reference Nashville schools and how well this system works to increase their graduation rates. I found their graduation rates overall were only in the 67% range. None of our high schools are even close to that low of a graduation rate. I understand there have been other districts with high graduation rates similar to Springfield Public Schools who have tried the academy system. What was the result of the academy system in those communities, and will you be forthcoming with that data in the future? The report also mentions that no intended impact on the arts and extracurriculars will be, let's see, there will be no intended impact on the arts and extracurriculars by the freshman seminar. It's clear that the intent of the freshman seminar courses is to move forward with the academy system. No one spends these kind of resources without that end in mind. If the assessment's favorable for the seminar pilot, what measures will be implemented to protect the arts and extracurriculars from the impact of the academies? It's one thing to not intend to hurt, it's another thing to seek to protect. The report also states the freshman seminar is not designed to track students into a specific career path, nor is it designed to limit accelerated options. In the full academy system, how do you intend to keep my child from being tracked into a career or be limited in accelerated options? What safeguard are there to protect the student's educational and career choices? In other words, will my student eventually be tracked into a career choice, and will that career choice be dictated by career options only in the Springfield demographic area? As you can see, we have not really gotten to the heart of the real impact of the academy system and the impact on teachers, students, and families of Springfield, Missouri. As concerned parents who care about our kids' futures and educational choices and freedoms, as parents who see the impact that caring arts teachers have made on our kids, we would ask that our students' educational and career choices not be limited by the academy system in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda. Items four, which is contracts, agreements, and change orders, five personnel elections, and three approval of minutes, I skipped that one. I would entertain a motion to approve those three consent agenda items.
Don't move.
Motion for Charles. Your second.
Second.
Second by Jill. Treasures report, December.
Good evening. We have provided you with our standard reports for the month, and I would like to highlight for you a couple of items. The treasures report items of interest document also covers some of these. For your information, the budget amendment is for the period December 6th through January 18th, and we have grant revenues and expenditures that are, the budgets are being aligned to the actuals that have been received. And also, there is an increase for the early childhood special education lease portion for January through June that was a correction to the original budget. The big change is for the debt service fund, and that's for the revenue and expenditure relative to the refinancing that was finalized in the month of December. As a reminder, that was a principal issuance of $98,795,000 that saved the district overall over the life of that debt, $9.7 million in interest fees. And again, it refinanced the Series 2010A, B, and D, 2013 and 2014A, and we received a very nice interest rate at 2.75% on those bonds. The fund balance percentage for the operating account remains stable. We are presenting with this budget amendment a slight change from 17.08% to 17.03%. Otherwise, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those and go into more detail.
Questions for Carol. Not a, did entertain a motion to approve the treasures report.
Still move.
Motion by Tim.
Second.
Your second. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to item 7.01, hiring process update. Penny.
Good evening.
I'm proud and pleased tonight to share with you all a very brief update on our hiring processes for both Explore 2018 and the upcoming school year. As you all know, but some of our visitors may not know, we hire year-round. We are always looking for great employees to come join our team, and our year-round hiring really focuses on transportation, food service, our custodial maintenance, paraprofessionals. And so if any of you are interested, and if you know of anyone who's interested, we are hiring for those positions, and that is a year-round process. But this time of year particularly, we begin to focus on our certificated hiring for the upcoming school year as well as our Explore hiring for the summer school session. And our team in HR, we've been working collaboratively with the learning team to find opportunities to streamline some of those processes, to build in some efficiencies, and to do some earlier hiring to help us ensure that we attract the most highly qualified candidates for those positions. And so very briefly, I wanted to let you know where we are in that process. Liz Cooper has been, has worked in our office, has worked with Dana Hubbard and Kelsey Bravo extensively over the last several months, planning and preparing for the upcoming Explore session. And I'm pleased to report that we have hired over now 335 individuals already to serve this summer's Explore. Last year, we hired more than 800 employees to work summer school session, and we did that in the midst of hiring for the following session as well, and we fully anticipate that we will hire at least 800 individuals to work this summer as well. Every effort is made to fill those with internal hires, and so those 335 individuals are our employees who seek to work this summer. We are currently hiring through an internal posting, and once we exhaust our internal candidates, all those employees who are currently employed who are interested in serving, we will then move to an external posting, and so that will be publicly available for employees from other districts or in our community who are interested in serving can come in and help fill out that roster for summer school. But at present, we are hiring internally only, and we strive to meet the desires of our employees with regard to placement in buildings for the summer sessions. So great work going on there with regard to Explore for this summer. Yes?
Is that 335 roughly equivalent to where we were this time last year?
I don't have that number for this time last year, and I don't know if we have Dana with us this evening to answer that. I do know that they have streamlined those processes and have an individual who's specifically dedicated, so I would say it is at least on par, if not a little ahead of where we were. And so the general hiring processes, so right now, we have both those processes running along in sync. We have our Explore efforts, and we've begun our hiring, or pre-hiring I'll say, for the upcoming 18, 19 school year. And as we do that, we want to remind ourselves of our objective, and that is to ensure that every classroom, every position, every leader in this district is of high quality, highly qualified, and effective. And one of our strategies in accomplishing those objectives is to ensure that we get to the door first, that we're able to hire individuals early in that process. And so we need to first identify what our need is early, look at our internal staffing to see who is most qualified and interested in those positions, and then get to those candidates externally earlier than our neighbors do so that we can hire them into the district to support our needs. And so at present, we have been working with the learning team to identify those known vacancies. So there are a certain number of positions you know every year you're going to have open and you're going to need to fill. And so we are currently working through identifying which positions those are. And we are narrowing that list. In the next week to two weeks, we will have a finalized list of those positions that we feel very confident that we can go ahead and post. Immediately following that, starting February 1 through February 10, we have our internal transfer process, and that is where our teachers have first preference on any transfers within the district that they're interested in. And so they can apply and list their three preferences for building location. They can then interview for those positions, and if they meet the needs and are the best qualified for those positions, they have first right to transfer within the district. And so we have that process ready to roll out, and we will be working through that February 1 through 10. Immediately following that February 10 date, we will be then looking at what we call our pool hires. We are currently interviewing student teachers, individuals who scored very highly on our initial screener, and individuals who have been highly recommended for employment with the district, to screen those candidates, find the most qualified. And once we work through that internal transfer window and know what we have left and where we have positions, we will be hiring candidates to place in a pool with locations to be determined later. The district has done this the last two years, so this is the third year of utilizing this process. And over the last two weeks, I believe we've had four or five days of interviews where we've had candidates coming in, and we have at least, at least 10 of these dates set aside to interview candidates. And so our internal employees have first preference. We then will move to those most highly qualified pool hires for placement, and then after that period of time, we will move to kind of a general hiring process. So it's threefold. Our goal this year is to hire 75% of our teachers by June 30. And our long-range goal is 85%. And that is a bit of a lofty goal when we look at where we've been the last few years. And so if you look in FY '16, we had 43% of our hires completed by that June 30 date. FY '17, 41, and FY '18, I'm sorry, 60, it was 43, and then 66, and then this last year, 61. So we are striving to make, meet a 75% mark so that we have an opportunity to identify and hire that talent a little bit earlier than our neighbors. And so our first objective is to hire as many of those candidates as we can in that January to March window. And so one of the strategies that we have offered with your support and at your direction is an early notice incentive to individuals who know that they want to retire or want to resign or move into a different position. And so knowing that we want to retain our employees as long as possible, but we naturally know that a certain number will be leaving us each year, the sooner that they will notify us of that decision, the better opportunity we have to begin to identify that talent, post those positions, and hire candidates. And so this is, again, the third year that the district is offering this incentive for employees, and in order to be eligible, they must be in a certified position, teacher or building leader, so it's site-based. They work through the end of the year, the school year, and they have not previously retired from the district. So what that means, for those employees who notified us by January 3, they receive $1,000, and they will receive that in the next payroll as well, so they get that money now. Then if they notify us by that February 1 date, it will be $750. Then at the end of February, and then March 19, it will be $500. And that just allows us to assess our need, so what's our need, and then make plans on how we're going to fill those positions to recruit and hire. So we wanted to let you know where we stand at this point with those notifications. You'll see that in FY '16, in January, we received 81. FY '18, we received 49. And this year, in the month of January, we received 72 notifications. And so that allows us to then work with the learning team to identify which of these positions do we need to fill. Are we going to be making shifts internally to cover some of those? Do some of them shift because of student needs and staffing needs into other positions? And then we will be able to identify which of those we need to post and then fill, and then again, get to that door earlier so that we can hire first and foremost those highly qualified candidates. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Penny.
Yes.
Do you have a sense of what percentage are retirements and what are resignations?
I do have that information, but I do not have it with me today, and I can get that for you. The majority will be retirements, but I can, I can email that to you.
Any other questions? Tim.
Penny, how comfortable are you in being able to make that 75%?
You know, I'm going to give it my best shot. Our team is working hard, and I'm going to say right now, I believe we can get there.
What are your strategies that, what are you doing different that is going to get you there?
So we have kind of walked through and reworked the entire hiring process, and we've started this pool hiring much earlier than we have previously. And instead of waiting until after March to actually offer those contracts, as soon as we complete those internal transfers, we're going to start sending contracts out to individuals. We're going to get them to sign on the dotted line and have them commit to SPS early. And then we are also, we've been working with the universities in our area. We've been out visiting with them and sharing with them our interest in having their candidates come join our team, and we've asked them to help us identify some really strong candidates, and we've begun to reach out to them to let them know that we're interested in having them apply as well. And so we're trying to be more proactive and affirmatively sharing with candidates, we are interested in you. We can't guarantee you a job, but we'd like for you to come. Take a look at SPS, you'll be pleasantly surprised, and we believe this is going to be home for you, and you're going to want to work here with us.
You know, I've found that, at least in architecture, speed to hire matters, and I don't know if it's the same way in education, but evidently that is part of your strategy, is just moving faster to get an offer out. The person who makes the offer first has an advantage in a competitive market evidently.
Absolutely.
In education as well as, I can attest in my business.
Absolutely. And not all of our candidates are graduating in May, so we have a number of candidates who've graduated in December, and so they are looking for positions. And if we can get them to commit now to working for us next year, and if we can encourage them to sign up with, let's say, Penn Mac and come in and sub for the remainder of the school year, or fill long-term absences that we have available, that's a great opportunity for them to get in, and we have them, you know, convinced and bought into our system, and I think that's a win for both parties.
Any other questions? Question I have.
Oh, I just have a comment. I'd love to hear that you're working with the universities. I know we had a speaker come and just remind us about leveraging the student associations. And I don't know if that was a new idea or just reminding us of those resources, but whether it's with the departments or whether it's with student associations, I think that that is cultivating a great pipeline for showing interest within our local community as well.
And we haven't reached out to the student organizations. We've been working through the departments.
Okay.
But I think that's another great avenue for us to explore.
And I don't know if they're one and the same or different. I just, you know, every school is a little different.
I suspect there are some of both that would be available, that that's a great suggestion that we can take a look at.
Other than the universities for the students coming out, where do you advertise for teachers, for experienced teachers, or feeling Explore this summer? Where do you advertise and try to recruit them?
And so that's something we've been discussing. You know, the traditional places are Success Link and Mole League, Mole Reap is what it was called. Those are the teacher sites where applicants know to go to look for teaching jobs in Missouri. We advertise on our website, depending upon the position that we have available. We've begun to look a little more broadly at LinkedIn, at Glass Door, at some of the other online social media, social media and other options that we have available to advertise. Specialized positions, we've been going to professional associations, advertising through those organizations. Some that we have attempted to look at are extremely expensive options, and so they don't make much sense for us to pursue at this time. But we're trying to become more connected with the resources that we know our incoming teachers utilize. And so we're always open to suggestions in that arena. I know in looking for some of our specialized, like also I use transportation as an example, we went to the Missouri Association of Pupil Transportation and said, can you help us advertise and reach that broader market to get our position out? And so we are exploring those options and are welcome any recommendations that individuals have.
This is just a curious question, but do we have any type of tracking database that shows us, using specifically teachers, like where their undergrad or grad degrees are coming from to show us? Maybe it's Columbia, and maybe, I mean, like where we're pulling from to see who our current teachers already are? You see what I'm asking?
I don't believe we have a tracking mechanism in place, but I do believe that we have identified some historical locations from which we are fortunate enough to draw candidates. I think working with Dr. Dawson and the AAA team, we can pull that out of the data that we submit and utilize that. I know exactly what you're referring to because we had that metric in my former life, and we were able to then identify most of our candidates came from this institution. And so you could focus some effort there.
Right, right. Just curious.
Any other questions for Penny?
Thank you.
Great, thank you Penny.
Thank you.
Fall out of my chair. Okay.
It's only 6:20.
I know. Okay, moving on, item 9.01, facility master plan update. Carol.
Okay, this is one simple slide. Basically, to provide, one slide, lots of comments. This basically provides you with an update on our facility master plan progress and the work that's being done behind the scenes. So you'll recall, our last activity was the request for qualifications process where, at the December 12 meeting, you approved us moving forward in negotiating contracts with architectural firms. In order for us to do that, we must first identify the specific project list. So that is the work that is taking place currently, where we are hoping to, our goal is to have that project list comprehensively developed by January 31. And we will then conduct a meeting with the architectural firms for preliminary discussion about the scope of work and the process by which they will engage in providing us the data that we are seeking. Also during that time, that first week of February, we'll have conversations with leaders and staffs affected by any recommendations for school closings, consolidations, or reorganization. At the February 6 meeting, our board study session, we will be providing you with a first read recommendation for the project list, and then a secondary recommendation that would be relative to any school closings, consolidations, or reorganizations. February 20 then would be the request for approval of that data. And by the end of February, we would anticipate that the architectural firms would be able to provide us with the estimated fees for their specific work, taking a look at renovating versus the new construction costs for these potential sites. March, the first week of March, if there are school closings, that would be the timeline for holding public hearings relative to any site closings, consolidations, or reorganization. March 6 would be the first read recommendation relative to the architectural services fees for the project list. March 20 would be the approval recommendation. March 21 through May 30, the architects would develop the base plan and cost estimates for sites. And then June or July would be their presentation overall regarding project information and a recommendation to the board for how to move forward for a potential bond issue in the future. So I know that's a lot to process all at one time. We wanted to be sure and get this information in your hands and know that work continues behind the scenes to get that project list developed, and we plan to communicate that with you in that first week of February.
Can I ask, the nature of the third section down, the first week of February, conversations with leaders and staff affected by school closing, what's the nature of that conversation? That seems to presume the outcome of a conversation and action that the board has not yet had.
Right, and quite frankly, it's, we find ourselves in this interesting dynamic of communicating, we must conduct any conversation with the board in a public meeting, and therefore we would not want staffs to hear about the fact that that was going to be presented to the board through media sources or other channels after the fact. So it would be a courtesy conversation to make them aware of the recommendation that would be forthcoming.
Have they had, have those folks had an opportunity to weigh in in a way that might shape that recommendation that ultimately will come to the board?
We would go through a process for that, and basically, we are currently gathering all the data relative to enrollments and other factors that are contributing to the ultimate recommendation. And so we would likely, excuse me, we would likely seek feedback through those conversations that has not yet been developed. Great questions.
Any other questions for Carol?
All right. Thank you very much.
Agenda.
Thank you more to him.
Yes. Okay, moving on to our next item. Item 10.01, which is public comment to address non-agenda items. We do have several speakers tonight, so make sure everybody's on the same page. Board of Education will allow comments on topics not related Board of Education will allow comments on topics not related to the printed agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes for each speaker and will be timed, as you'll see on the screen. Inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the school or in the district office. The board uses this time in our meeting to listen to comments and/or concerns from the public, but won't comment or engage with the speakers during the meeting. So, we have several here, so we'll get through. First is Lori Sullivan.
This is a thank you from the Missouri State Teachers Association. You'll find next to your precious name tags, we put an envelope there of a thank you note to you. And Stephanie is handing to you a small treasure. It does cinch. I couldn't make it cinch, so we gave it to you to figure out, but we know it is supposed to cinch.
Thank you.
We would like to say, you know, as adults, all of us spend time doing things that we have to do and doing things that we want to do. You are all busy professional people and we want to say thank you for serving on the board. Thank you for caring about public education in Missouri and in Springfield. And thank you for wanting to.
Thank you, Lori.
That's really nice.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Carl Herd. Carl?
Members of the Board of Education, greetings.
Hello.
Amy Sant John has given an excellent evaluation of the superintendent's performance. Test scores, APR and attendance. The news leader has one line in Monday's paper about test scores. The scores were described as largely flat. Let's look at largely. First, MAP scores given in May of 2017. Every grade and subject from third through eighth grade scores are below state average. Except ELL, which is slightly above state average, ELL students are only 3.7% of the R-12 enrollment. Second, APR and/or annual performance report. Point one, R-12's APR has declined two years in a row. 2015, 90.4%. 2016, 86.8%. 2017, 83.9%. Point number two, look at the list of seven area schools. Only Joplin was slightly lower than R-12's, 83.9%. The other schools are in the high 90s with Republic having the highest score, 99.3%. Point number three, two large school districts statewide, North Kansas City and Independence, APR scores are 93.9% and 95.0%. Point number four, attendance is down from 86.03% in 2016 to 83.6% in 2017. This represents a large amount of state money. In closing, R-12's very poor performance is not acceptable. The quality of education that is lacking will affect economic development and real estate scores. Why are you, the R-12 board, not accepting these facts? It is Amy Sant John's data. As to the superintendent's contract extension, I would give his performance a D minus minus and recommend no extension be given until such time that he turns these test scores around. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, our next speaker is Pat Scott.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak and thank you for your service. It's a thankless job. And if you do what I want you to do, it's going to be a lot more thankless. Keeping in mind, you know those test scores. We have to look at test scores. We have to look what's happening at that. I guess the contracts have already been let for the architects to come in and figure out which small community school is going to be closed. I would like to see you board, and I may be wrong on that. I am not a fan of the open classroom concept, the alternative seating, or even the Ignite program from the grade kindergarten up. You've had numerous, you've had speakers before come in where, and I know this for a fact from schools, some parents do not let their kids take their phone books home. There's going to be some hard choices to look at for you board members. York School, Dr., oh, what's her name? Dr. Laura? York? What is it? Hopper. My, look what she's done with York. What I would like to see this board do is make some hard choices. We don't have to be talking about closing schools. We need to bring our test scores up. We spent millions of dollars not that very many years ago to air condition our schools and I don't know of a one that's close to being condemned or even needs a lot of work. Yes, they need to be maintained, but I think your hard choices are for this community to say, "Stop, Dr. Junkman or whoever's making the choices." And let's look at test scores and performance. My idea is that the business community should be very much concerned with what's happening with Springfield, R-12. Every school system around Springfield is scoring above Springfield. All of these new things that we're looking at, open classrooms, Ignite from kindergarten when they don't know anything else, the alternative seating when they're laying around in the floor on dirty pillows or old sofas. And we had rooms, we had in our schools stacked up, the furniture stacked up to the ceiling, which I guess that's already been sold. There's some hard choices to make. This program may not work that Dr. Jungman wants to do. I didn't plan on speaking. When I got up this morning, my thinking was, I knew you were looking at contract extensions and I thought to myself, "How much do governors make?" So, I go on the website and it's kind of hard to find. Of all the states, oh, there's half a dozen or dozen governors that make less than $100,000 a year. There's not any that make over $200,000. Now, that's not saying, I know for some reason, school superintendent, that has gone way off the chart as far as the discrepancy between what administrators and a handful of administrators. It's not like your hard choices are just because they want the wish list, somebody's going to have to say, "Let's get some results for the business community." I'm interested in the Chamber of Commerce getting involved in what's happening in Springfield. I have a copy of this report. It came from the Sandlot Postage with regard to, I just ran it off this morning. There's others, there's some things in there, a lot of things about charter schools, but I think it's right on. You may have access to this and a lot more.
Thank you.
I ties up, sorry.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mary Byrne.
Good evening and thank you for listening to public comments. While we've heard several comments about looking at test scores, my concern is about the quality of the tests that may be giving you false impressions about what the performance of the schools really are. On November 14, 2017, I sent to you via the board secretary's email, a paper I wrote for the Missouri Coalition Against Common Core that describes the apparent unethical and irresponsible and perhaps illegal responses of DESI personnel to two assessment events in 2017. I submitted the same report to Governor Greitens' office in October of 2017 and an updated report that includes references to Missouri statutes to the state attorney general and the state auditor on January 8th of this year, the same day I testified to the state board of education on the qualifications of the next commissioner. I'm concerned that so much attention has been given to defense of the former commissioner by employees of this district and no attention has been given to the defense of Springfield students and taxpayers that may have been negatively affected by the decisions of that commissioner. I provided you with packets of excerpts. I've given it to Kathy and I have additional copies for the packets here. Excerpts of the reports that I collected from the TACT, the Technical Advisory Committee to DESI, which are no longer available on the website, which is in conflict with Missouri sunshine law. Nonetheless, I have excerpts to share with you in that packet that verify that the tests were not equivalent in the forms across those years. So, that what you saw was a decline in Springfield test performance because the test form given this year was harder than the test form given last year in the Algebra I and the English II EOCs. All right? That is irresponsible on the part of the state to actually ask you to administer that at taxpayer expense. So, finally, the commissioner's decision to not release the result to the Common Core-aligned Algebra and English EOC data has concerns at several levels. First, DESI was made aware of the fact that those forms were likely not equivalent in November of 2016. The report from Questar to DESI and a mysterious technical advisory committee, or TACT, has no public list of mentors, no legislative authorization, meets in an airport hotel, no minutes are published and you don't ask why are those results not released to the public? That was not released on the advice of TACT in violation of Missouri sunshine law and you don't question that? That's concerning to me. Second, regardless of what TACT recommended, Missouri statute 161.122 mandates that the commissioner will evaluate test progress or the lack thereof and shall promptly make public by electronic media the results of all studies and evaluations and tests. Nobody contests her. Third, appropriations bills from HB 2, which is the appropriations bills every year in the legislature since 2013 prohibited the use of appropriations for the support or the implementation of Common Core standards, yet those two EOCs were Common Core-aligned as per a contract with CTP McGraw-Hill in 2013. The fact that we had a lawsuit stopping membership in SBA did not stop the administration of SBA-aligned tests. And nobody questions that this was not in compliance with the appropriations law. Fourth, federal law requires that technical adequacy data of validity and reliability be posted on the DESI website. It's not there. And that was passed in 2015. This is three years later. Those tests are still being administered and it doesn't comply with federal law and nobody questions it.
Ms. Byrne, your time is up.
Well, I have recommendations for you in your handout, asking for remediation of those problems.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Roy Holland.
Mr. President, could I get an extra minute for a story?
Is it a good one?
Oh, yeah. Well, this is about timing. You know, I used to be in the legislature and I was on the professional registration committee for eight years. I was the only doctor for six years and so, we oftentimes had people come up in droves. They filled up a room because they were for a certain bill or against a certain bill. So, we had to keep people on time. And so, being how we do it in Missouri, the chairman had it all worked out so everybody got precisely three minutes because we had a certified Missouri egg timer that we turned over every time somebody started.
Do you have an egg timer?
I used to have an egg timer.
So, turn it over if you would.
We went technical.
Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you. My name's Roy Holland. I live in Springfield at 1840 East Vincent Street. I've been a resident of Springfield for 35 years. And eight of those years, I represented our city in the state legislature. I was on the committee for House Elementary and Secondary Education for six years. When you go up there now and in past decades, you find out that Kansas City and St. Louis have strong problems and influence in policy. They were the dominant metropolitan school systems and the dominant areas. But both of them, as you may recall, were judged to have unequal education resources for low-income children who happened to be mostly black. So, we spent 20 years under federal court supervision. We spent billions of state dollars during that time. After this, those families of the districts still sought to improve their children's education by simply leaving the districts. And so, this explains to some degree why those districts are smaller than Springfield. They were larger, if you recall. And so, what this does is this leaves Springfield as the largest accredited system in Missouri. Both of those cities spend a lot of money on buildings, but their scores and their learning did not improve even though the superintendents were turned over every two or three years in both systems. So, here we are in Springfield now. We are the third metro of Missouri. We are surrounded by a ring of typical suburban, more affluent cities with more stable families and lower free and reduced lunch. We have a rising 54% free and reduced lunch. And as you've heard, the recent MAP scores are mostly at or below state average, which we need to remember, this is right where Kansas City and St. Louis were in decades past. So, the question is, what's present Springfield from following the Missouri metro model? When does urban flight begin? I think that we are indeed in a time of uncertainty and the question is, does this board and the voters of Springfield believe that new buildings or trendy, open, larger classrooms will raise scores and stabilize kids' lives? Today is Superintendent Jungman's annual review and the question is, what is his direction at this crossroads? Or is there even a crossroads awareness at the same time as an extension of his contract or a pay increase really needed? Or might that signal an end to public discussion of problems and system direction to the 50% of the voters who oppose the bond and also perhaps reduce the hopes for the 13,000 at-risk kids in poverty with lower scores? So, my thought for the simplest action, which we always sought in Jeff City, is to maybe stamp a review as satisfactory on his review and with no changes and then delay decisions for building bonds and school closures. And then, first, expand the existing programs which you have, like preschool, like after-school math and reading. Club Encore, I loved. I tried to get it into state law and I couldn't. Summer school could be expanded. And there's other things that can be done that will still make a difference for kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Cheryl Clay.
Good evening. Well, I can't talk about the data because I've been waiting on some data numbers for about 90 days that I still don't have. I've been promised to have it by the end of the month and I'm still waiting on the test scores from the summer school program. But what I do want to talk about, I did meet with Ms. Rector last week and we discussed a process and the procedures for abuse from staff members of SPS. So, I was very happy with my discussions with her. She did give me a copy of a documented policy and procedure that I think we were both surprised that there was nothing written down before. You didn't have a documented policy or procedure in the past, nothing that was written down. And now, we do. It's a little bit more generic than I would have liked, but I also understand that sometimes our little darlings cannot be quite truthful also. I do know that door swings both ways. But with that being said... But with that being said, I did want to say that I am very happy, I know y'all shocked, but I was very happy with the response that I got from Ms. Rector, and I think she is a great asset to this administration. On the other hand, let me look at my time, okay, now I'm gonna go off script because the other people brought this up, you know, and I keep crying, this tuned off, so our test scores are flat, and they've been flat and going down for the last two years, and if you'll look back and remember, that is when we decided to switch everything up and go to technology. We don't send books home anymore. So, I don't know when you guys are going to figure it out, that all children don't learn like that, and those laptops and those Chromebooks are not educating our children very well. That is why we have all these failures in our test scores, and that's from about the last two years, I do believe. And I think that's it. I've got 34 seconds left. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank all the speakers for coming forward to speak. I think that's really important in this process of hearing the public, your thoughts and ideas, so I do want to appreciate that, I do, I think that's great. Moving on, Focus Area 1.
So it's my pleasure to bring to you the mid-year report for Focus Area 1. As you recall, last fall, we brought you the end-of-the-year report for Focus Area 1, and it encompasses a number of teaching and learning initiatives. Tonight, we're bringing you a mid-year update, we'll give you a quick snapshot of where we're at with, just if I can advance that. We're gonna give you a brief overview on school safety, where we're at with health and hygiene, and then I'm gonna have Rhonda Mammon and Lynn Schurke come forward and give you a more in-depth review of where we're at with our social and emotional health within our strategic plan. I wanted to start with this school safety piece, because the team has been working the last couple of years around this strategy, and we made it a huge initiative around plans and drills. That was our big kind of footprint into that space. Those are really checkmark moments, you have it or you don't have it. This team has come together this year and has said, we're gonna revamp the whole metrics, moving from checkmarks to impact. So they are moving from impact to say, what does the training in those buildings look like versus the incidents in those buildings? What is the crime and weapons happening around a neighborhood, and how's that influencing the school? What's the relationship with our police officers and our school police in our buildings? So we want to be able to start looking at impact measures. One of them will be response time, but this is a revamp of that strategy and how we're gonna measure it. So I just wanted to give you a quick update and show you that it continues to move forward and mature, I think, as we continue to visit with it. The other piece is our health and hygiene. Again, this was one of those that we talked a lot about, trainings and community support. You'll probably recall the tooth truck, we talked about the impact that's had on our students. We also have met with this team, and we're going to be revamping the metrics for this team, the more impact, looking at attendance codes around medical and absences, and seeing if we have patterns in certain buildings, and if we talk to certain families and see if we can drill that data down to make a better impact. The other one is access to resources, and this is about matching the top needs of the buildings to what we can provide. Instead of a one-size-fits-all moment, we're gonna individualize it and personalize it with what that building needs. This building might need shoes, this building might need backpack program, this building might need some sort of a health awareness around maybe dental program. So we're gonna try to individualize that and customize that for the buildings, which I'm excited about. And then the last one is really about equity of resources, and making sure we increase the number of screenings that we're doing now, and then linking those kids and those families to community resources. So we're gonna move from checkmark moment, we did this many trainings, this piece, to more of an impact model, and we have that year to bring it to you, we'll bring you that update in the fall. So that's where we're at today. Now it's my pleasure to introduce Rhonda Mammon, and she's gonna come up, and she's our Director of Counseling Services, and she'll come up and give us a more in-depth look at our strategy around 1.1.3, which is really about our social and emotional health and what we're doing in the district and some of the trends. Rhonda, thank you for joining me, and you'll need to scroll it down.
All right. Don't have my little clicker with me, my security blanket. Thank you, and good evening. I just want to give you some highlights from the data that we've been looking at throughout the year, and as we reported in the fall, we have several partnerships developed, and I think that's one of the areas in this particular strategy that is emphasized, that we want to work with our community partners in order to provide more support, even though we do have about 85 counselors in our district, school counselors now, the need is so great right now that we really need to pull in as many of the resources as we can. So what you see in our data highlights are a couple of the partnerships that we have. The first one is with Community Partnership of the Ozarks, and we have been using the youth mental health first aid model to train our staff in the signs and to become more aware of what the mental health issues of our students are. And so we, at this point in time, have been able to train approximately 369 of our staff members, and I'll show you some more specific data on the next couple of slides. We also have in place, as you know, our school-based clinicians who are able to provide more long-term support in a clinical way for our students who have the need to have a more of a therapeutic relationship with a mental health professional. And I'm gonna give you a little bit more data concerning those issues also. As a reminder, I put up the slide of our continuum of school mental health services, and the bottom tier, the bottom two tiers that you see there are facilitated primarily by our school counselors, and that is our universal intervention and prevention strategies that we use with students. That could be anywhere from classroom lessons, our board member Bruce Renner was a school counselor for years, so he knows this very well, but every student in our district has the ability to access services from the school counselor, whether it's prevention or intervention. The school counselor is also instrumental in that early identification of mental health and behavioral concerns. We begin to move on up the tier, and that middle tier is where we begin to identify the students that have some of the risk factors that really create an issue for them in school, their behavior, it affects their academic achievement. So that's when we began to make referrals to the school-based clinicians, to outside community support specialists. The top tier, of course, are those students with severe and chronic problems, and most of those students, which is a pretty low percentage, actually about 3% of our students that receive intensive interventions from outside resources. So that's what we have available within our district. As I mentioned from the first slide, I wanted to show you a little bit about the impact of the youth mental health first aid training. These charts show you just from May 16 to July 17, but during that time, that's the number of staff members that were trained. We offer approximately one training a month. Community partnership pays for the sub-fee for any staff members that want to attend, and we take a maximum of 30 each month. We have opened it up to all age levels, it was first opened only to secondary staff members, but now we've opened it to elementary staff also. The data that I think is most important for us to look at is how many referrals have come from those staff members that have been trained. And the reason that we have this data is because every month, they get a survey that they have to complete and send back. So out of that number of staff that have been trained, we had over 900 of them that helped students identify some self-help strategies, we had over 400 that were referred for professional services, that could be a school counselor, that could be someone outside of the school. And then there were additional 300, over 300 other services provided. So the impact that that made, hopefully, saved a student's life or kept them from really having some severe issues and that. So I think that is really something that's impressive of what we've been able to do. Okay, there it goes. Some data from our school-based clinician report, and at the end of these slides, there will be a link that will give you more specific data regarding this. We have a full report from Burrell that shows us exactly what some of these percentages mean. But last year, in the 1617 school year, we had 450 referrals to our school-based clinicians. That's in K-12, across all of our sites. The first chart shows you that at the end of those 450 referrals, only 141 actually ended up receiving counseling from those school-based clinicians. First of all, they don't have enough time, six clinicians don't have enough time to see 450 students. If they are going to see them long-term, their caseload really is only about 25 to 30 students at any given time. So what happens to the rest of those students is in that first chart, it shows you that there were 44 that declined services, there are lots of other reasons, but the majority of them are connected to other resources in the community. We also have a community support specialist, social worker, that will help those students that don't receive, aren't able to get into the clinician, help them get connected to someone outside in the community. So we're not just leaving them floundering out there, we're trying to get them connected. But 141 are receiving counseling from our clinicians.
Is our number of school-based clinicians sort of in keeping with national norms for district or size? In some ways, I'm putting you in a deposition, if you were czarina of the world and you could have as many as you thought would be appropriate, how many would that be?
Those are two different questions.
Yeah. Answer the second one, Rhonda.
Are you offering us some money to?
No, no. This is hypothetical.
We need, I can't give you a number, obviously, but I will tell you that there are many more students that probably would be referred that are not, because the counselors know that the clinicians are filled, you know, that the slots are filled. And so they then will go another direction, thinking, you know, this kid needs help right now, so I'm gonna find another way to find that support.
Are there national norms for district or?
This position is not something that all school districts have. Springfield has it because we had for many years, we had a federal grant, Safe Schools, Healthy Students grant, where we were able to fund the position, and the impact was great. And so our district decided that this was something that we really could use in our district and provided that. And with Burrell's partnership, we're able to actually provide more than we would if we were hiring them ourselves with that, even though we do contract with them to provide it.
Just to clarify, it's not to assume, when you look at the numbers, that only 141 of the 450 are receiving a service or treatment, because some students may get referred with their family to a local resource.
Exactly.
There may be other.
We're still helping them navigate the system outside of the school. But for many students, as you know, it's hard for them to get to the services, and having that on the school site really increases the possibility of them getting the counseling.
But it's probably not 100% in terms of 100% of that number receiving some kind of services, because people are sometimes resistant.
Because many times after they've agreed to be referred to the clinician, once the clinician calls and sets it up, they've changed their mind or they've moved on to something else.
Right, I figured, I just didn't want to make it sound quite that good.
Well, no, but I did not want to make it sound that dark.
Yeah. Sure, because just because you get a referral doesn't necessarily mean that you need follow-up care, it's a touch point.
They do an intake and decide what is gonna be the best service for them.
I'm a huge fan of those positions. You should not be surprised to learn, my friend.
I'm not.
Okay.
The other thing I want to point out are the grade levels that we have the most referrals from, this is no surprise either. The middle grades, six through nine, are the highest levels, those are the transition years, those are really tough years.
That's some rough times.
And so that's where we see the highest percentage. All right, the other thing I'm gonna talk about, just why we're doing what we're doing and some of the new strategies that we've implemented recently, is just some trend data from the Missouri Student Survey that is given every other year. Between 2010 and 2016, the number of students who indicated they'd been bullied has increased, both at SPS level and Missouri level. Also, the number of students indicating that they had thought about committing suicide or attempting suicide in the last 12 months has increased also. In fact, it has gone up, and in our district alone, it's gone up almost 6%, the number of students.
I do think it's rare for me to be the one to say something optimistic, so get ready. It is fair to say that some of that is because we've done a better job of allowing that voice and giving a language to speak that, so it's not.
And that's not a bad thing.
No, it is not.
A lot of the awareness and the education, and I really truly believe that we're gonna be seeing, you know, we're gonna be tracking our referrals, I think because of the awareness that we're creating in the staff, we're also gonna see many more referrals coming in. But that, to me, is a positive, because some of that, we can maybe save a student's life from getting those referrals. Same thing with child abuse, same type of.
Rhonda, who conducted the survey?
Pardon?
Who did the survey?
That's done, it's actually done nationally, but the State of Missouri, DESI, and the Department of Mental Health, it's been given every two years since the year 2000, so we have data going back all the way to 2000 on that one. And I just pulled these two out, just because it's continuing to increase.
But you did the bottom two.
Oh, the bottom two, oh, okay, I put those on there just to show the difference, because there are two of the behaviors that we track, cigarette smoking and alcohol use that have declined in the last six years. So that's not to say we still don't have some, I see your face, Jill.
I'm just not sure what I think of that.
Well, alcohol use has declined, but other things have increased.
Yes, that's what I thought.
But we were just trying to show the contrast of some behaviors that, we're putting some good news up there.
Okay, all right.
With that, so.
I'm skeptical.
Okay, so looking ahead, what are we gonna be doing a little bit differently? Beginning this month, all school counselors are gonna be collecting data in a different way, show the number of students that come in that are concerned personally for themselves or for a friend regarding suicide prevention and intervention. First semester, we began implementing the signs of suicide curriculum in the health classes, all ninth-grade health classes. We also, our middle school counselors are teaching the curriculum in either sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, sometimes all three grades, depending on the school. So we are going to, we have a data collection process where students, where counselors are now going to track that very closely, so we'll be able to see actually how many students are coming in with those concerns. So that's something we haven't done specifically before. And then in regard to our bullying prevention programs, we are still implementing the Too Good for Violence curriculum to all students in grades K through 8, and that meets the state requirements for these House bills that have been recently passed. And then just to recap, with some of the information I've already shared with you, one of the things that I didn't mention earlier is that 98% of our student sites have one or more teachers now trained in youth mental health first aid.
That's fantastic.
And we hope to be able to get the rest of them in by the end of the year. We have, again, continue to add sessions for second semester each month, so if you know of someone that wants to do the training, or if any of you would like to join us, certainly welcome to do that.
Because you all participated in the Train the Trainer, so you now do it in-house?
We do it in-house.
And you did that through CPO, right? Because you mentioned that.
Right, they provided the cost of the training, which is pretty pricey, actually.
Yeah, they're fantastic, they've been great on this.
And we have eight counselors that are trained, and some other, a couple other staff members also that are facilitating. members also that are, that are facilitators.
Great.
So, we really appreciate those partnerships. We, I've also had to put the link on there for the full evaluation report with the school-based clinicians, and I hope you'll look at it because one of the things that is really impressive with that is the, there's improvement in behavior and academic achievement in most of the students that are seeing or receiving services from the clinicians.
That's great.
So, that's, that's something that I think is really important to point out. So, I am going to invite Lynn to come up and talk to you about what she's been doing with the McKinney-Vento students.
And we'll limit ourselves to only a few questions if we have any.
I was told to be brief, so I'm gonna try really hard.
I think they think you and I will engage in a private conversation.
Perhaps, perhaps.
We won't.
Well, I, I would invite you to engage me outside of this meeting any other night.
Yes, ma'am.
That'll likely happen.
Yes, thank you so much for having me. I just want to remind you that last year was the first year that we had a full-time position as a homeless liaison, and there have been a lot of changes in this past year. A lot of progress has been made, and we still have a lot of progress to make. But I do want to talk about some things that, that have been done and, and have been really, really great things for our families. First and foremost, again, my primary goal is to remove barriers to education for our children and youth experiencing homelessness. And again, that definition of homelessness is those children and youth that lack a fixed, adequate, or regular nighttime residence. So, those folks that have lost a permanent residence due to economic hardship or a disaster. So, what do I do? I advocate for them. That means removing barriers to enrollment, making sure that school staff are aware of the protections and educational rights afforded to these students under the law, also educating our community members about what those protections are. Funny thing, what I've seen is, as I'm doing all of this education, I'm getting a lot more referrals. So, word is spreading, which is fantastic because it is so important that folks know what these protections are and what these rights are for these children and youth. That said, I'm busy. So, last year, because I found that I was so busy and really unable to properly serve all of these youth on my own, I created something called Wednesday Connection, which is a community collaboration, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a few moments. Also, I think I mentioned the last time I was in front of you, the grant that I wrote and received full funding, so excited about that. It's $150,000 annually for three years. What's great about it is that I was able to hire two full-time social workers to assist these families with the highest barriers to stability. So, they're providing services aside, outside of what is federally mandated and outside of what I'm able to do or do do in my position. So, they're providing ongoing supportive case management services for these families with the highest barriers. In addition, with that funding, we can provide additional training and support for our staff to train them in things related to McKinney-Vento, such as, we'll be sending 30 SPS staff to a trauma-informed schools conference coming up this summer. Very excited about that because as we all know, children and youth who experience homelessness are experiencing trauma every single day. And our staff, it's very important that they have some understanding of what that does to a child's brain when they're living in that traumatic experience. So, I'm really excited that we're able to provide that. Moving forward, okay, so Wednesday Connection. This is where I would really invite you to come and serve at this wonderful event. I would invite you to come and serve as a guide. At this event, we have these onsite partners, and they come to the Dream Center every second and fourth Wednesday of the month that school is in session. So, the families that I work with that experience the highest barriers to stability can then come and meet with these onsite partners. They have a two-hour timeframe where they can meet with these folks without any appointment or any barrier and access their services right then and there. Because what I found last year was that I was referring all these folks to all over the city, and of course, they were not able to access these services that they desperately needed to provide stability to their family. Well, why is that so important when I'm supposed to be helping them get educated, right? Well, what I've also found, and you all know, is that when a family lacks stability, the likelihood that that child is going to be accessing education is very slim. So, my philosophy is that we can help to stabilize these families by providing them with these resources, then their children are more likely to access the education that they have a right to. So, these folks are our onsite partners. We have volunteers that come and assist these, these caregivers that are accessing Wednesday Connection. And, and again, I would invite you to act as a volunteer one day to really see and experience what these families are going through on a daily basis. It is a truly powerful event. It is also really a bear to put on, but every, yes, ma'am?
Can I ask her a question? Thanks. Is that everyone you want to have as an onsite partner, or are you looking to grow that group?
So, these are the onsite partners that we currently have. Would I like to grow the program? Heck, yes, I would. Would I like a clone of me to help me do that?
Okay, so this is what we can manage right now?
Yes.
Okay.
O-CAC is also one of the partners sometimes. And then, we also partner with MSU, Evangel, and some other community groups that do help provide some assistance with volunteerism and things like that.
And I'm not trying to, but like...
Sure.
Parents as teachers wouldn't be a big stretch to...
Wouldn't be a big stretch. Yep.
That's one of our favorites, me and Jerry.
Yeah.
That's where we met.
That's a good one. So, I do want to just throw a couple of numbers at you.
Did that sound weird?
In eight program dates, so eight Wednesday Connection dates, we had 34 unique households come through that program. And in that two-hour time period that they're allotted to meet with those service providers, they made 145 connections with service providers in that brief timeframe. That is a huge success. And 33 of them attended a basic budgeting and personal finance class, and 18 of them returned for additional education in basic budgeting and personal finance, housing and tenant rights 101, and employment 101 class. So, I think that's outstanding. As I said, it is a huge bear to put on. However, every single Wednesday Connection date, we have families leaving in tears, tears of gratitude, because they are coming in hopeless and they are leaving with hope. It is a fantastic thing.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. I'm getting all the clout. So, next steps, continue community collaboration. Wednesday Connection can certainly be grown, as can many other things, with some additional help. I talked about some additional opportunity learning, learning for SPS school staff, that trauma-informed schools training I'm very excited about. Some of our school staff have already attended this training and have absolutely raved about it. Provide additional targeted case management supportive services for those families that have the greatest barriers to stability, maintain requirements for grant funding, and refine current practices and procedures for the McKinney-Vento program. As I said, we've come a long way and we still have a long way to go. What questions do you have?
I believe I've been cut off, so I'm done.
I want to say thank you to Lynn. We, two years ago, we put some set-aside funds for after-school tutoring for homeless kids. That was all, that's all we could do at the time. We reorganized some funds around federal programs, and we hired Lynn. We hired a person of passion and compassion, and she has created an organization with Wednesday Connect that you should come and see. I had the privilege of watching it and going through and seeing our clients there, and they're SPS families and children. This isn't like opening up to the whole county. This is our kids and our families that we're servicing, and could never have done it without Lynn's leadership, and so, want to publicly thank her.
Thank you.
And thank Rhonda for what she's done for our students in the classroom, so we're very thankful. So, will we transition to...
We're gonna transition with a break for about, we've gone two hours, and they're looking at me like, why are we still here? We gotta get, I need a break. So, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come right back and start with academies to that, because we got other things to go to after that, so... Proceed on with freshman academies. Mike?
Thank you for the break. We were able to readjust and everybody will get new seating for everybody. So, you get a new seat. So, everybody, you all got the same seats, so. Thank you for having us. I'm just gonna do the quick introduction, but this has really been an 18-month journey, as you know. Last June, we came to the board and were seeking approval for a pilot freshman academy program at Hillcrest in Glendale. You approved that. We went out and did a, a number of learning tours. One of them was to another academy district, and some of you were able to attend that trip, and we appreciate your input and your feedback. I think when we came back, there was a tremendous amount of excitement was generated, a lot of questions were generated, there's been a lot of conversations, there's been a lot of discussion. And tonight, we hope that we can kind of let you know exactly where we're at and where we're going with the why we're doing it and the how we're gonna do it. But since that trip and since that learning, Dr. Dublin has done an amazing job of pulling together stakeholder groups. We have had staff engagement, we've had feeder pattern engagement with some of our eighth grade teachers who would be sending students here for their feedback. We've had student orientation, we've had parent meetings, we've had community updates, and tonight, we're gonna just really focus in on why we're going this path for this one pilot moment of freshman academy, this one half-credit class around the seminar, and then the why and then the how. So, to help kind of kick that off, I'm gonna introduce Dr. Shane Dublin, who will take it from here and then introduce the team as we go along. So, Dr. Dublin?
So, I want to pause for a second. Fair warning, our, our guests have been here for an hour and a half, and so they're a little amped, not sure what we're gonna get when we get them up here.
Oh.
But that's exciting. I think they're excited to be here, and I do want to thank them and their parents for sticking around to, to hear this. So, we're gonna kind of jump in, as Dr. Dawson said, and give you an update tonight on freshman academies at Glendale and Hillcrest next year. So, the, the board, you have seen some of this first part of the presentation before, so it's kind of just a review of our 18-month process, some of the data behind it, and then we'll kind of jump into some new data of our current freshmen, and then continue with the how we're going to accomplish this. So, first of all, just a quick review, this has been an 18-month journey. We started back 18 months ago with Imagine SPS and really building empathy for the high school experience. We had teachers and leaders become a student for a day and really get to feel for what's it, what does it feel like to be in our schools? We also did some external visits along with those internal school visits and got some ideas to bring back to Springfield to tweak for us and see what might work here. Continued, we can build consensus around what we learned from those visits, and that really drove our focus to come, to get us to think about doing freshman academies. So, we're gonna kind of jump into, actually, I'm gonna give you, again, you've seen this before, but just a quick review of our feedback from that process. On left-hand side, you have our high school team feedback. The biggest couple of things that came out of that was relationships and choice. Also, our middle school team, relationships was synonymous, and then small learning communities, and also student choice, you can see there as well, came back, came out of those...
From Imagine SPS?
Yes, that's correct, from Imagine SPS, the feedback, correct. So, jumping into the why, here's kind of a quick overview of what I'll be showing you of the why behind freshman academies. Again, we're gonna look at our student engagement, engagement data both nationally and locally, some of our freshman data at Glendale and Hillcrest as to dropout rates, our attendance rates and our course failure rates. College and career metrics, we won't be looking at that data, but just want to note that that's something we'll be looking at long-term to hope to affect that. And then graduation rates, we have some data to show current graduation rates. So, we're gonna jump into, again, you've seen some of this, the national engagement data, this came from a 2016 poll, nearly a million students that how their engagement goes from fifth grade to 12th grade, you can see it obviously dips pretty precipitously. And then, leading into our own data of our kid, our student engagement, kind of mirrors that. On the left-hand side, 35% of our kids, according to our own internal survey, said that they were interested in their courses, and on the right-hand side, 31% said, how interesting do you find the things you learn in the classes? 31% find that interesting. Again, this is not new data, this is what you've seen, but just wanted to kind of remind you of some of that why behind the student engagement driving what we're gonna do, yes?
Did you remind people that the Gallup National Survey is different than the engagement survey?
That's correct. Yes, Gallup is national, right. This is our own panorama survey, correct?
And then, remind us, we had all different grade levels in the SPS engagement data survey in Spring of 2017.
That's correct.
All different.
Yep.
Just reminding people who may not...
Great point, yeah, thank you. Yep. These responses, the 7,000 student responses were 612, so I'm secondary, but yes, all K-12 took the data. Yep. And I, and I should've said, please ask questions along the way.
Well, you know we will.
I want you to, yeah, I'd rather be conversational.
Thank you, Shane.
Yeah, why do I have to say it, right? Okay, so that was a quick overview of kind of the background of the why, and we're going to go kind of bring it current to our current reality, and I'd like to introduce Dr. Sheila Nguyen to jump up, and she's gonna share some of our current freshman reality at Glendale and Hillcrest.
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of information about the specific why and specifically to the freshman class, and then talk a little bit about the graduation rates at both Glendale and Hillcrest. Freshmen, specific to freshman students, the overall student engagement at Glendale, 25%. And then, attendance, 90% of the freshman students attend 90% of the time. Right now, we have 81%. That was for first semester this year at Glendale. So, 81% of the freshman students, 364, are attending 90% of the time at Glendale.
Is the, the 25%, the overall student engagement, is that a mashup of how interested you are, or is that, is that a discrete item on that survey?
It's a roll-up of the similar questions.
Number of questions, yeah.
For the previous slide.
That's correct, yep.
And only looking at ninth-grade students from...
Spring of 2017, because that's when we asked that, that engagement piece on that survey data, yeah. 16.9% of the students freshman class at Glendale failed a first semester class. That would be a quarter class or a semester class, so they had one F or more. So, equivalent, we're talking about 364 students, we're looking at 61 students at Glendale had an F or had more than one F for first semester. The dropout rate, 0.83%, that's equivalent to three students, not three students, first semester that we lost at Glendale.
That typically would drop out at the end of freshman year?
They lost this semester at Glendale. We lost three students at, this is all directly, yes, to first semester. We pulled that data that we're looking at as to the why.
Was their data on, the one before the failure, failure class, with their success or failure rate in eighth grade? In other words, were these kids that had an F in eighth grade also? Or necessarily, or have you even looked at that, you know, or, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, is it the freshman, the transition year?
Or is it the individual?
Or is it the individual that you almost expect, you know, I don't, I'm not sure what I'm asking, but I just...
Give us a little context.
No, that's a good question.
Where's there some...
It's that five-year historical data, so what are we looking at from eighth grade on? And that may be a good, that may be, Natalie and Gary may be able to address that just a little bit. I'm sure it's probably a compilation of things, yeah, probably that transition period and courses and credits, and there's a lot of transition from eighth, ninth grade, so good question.
Yeah, I think if your question is, this 16.9% is current just freshman for first semester, but I think that's a good question.
For eighth grade.
How does it connect to them as eighth grade?
Right.
There might have been signs and symptoms ahead of that, I think, is what he's suggesting, and there probably were.
Yeah, and looking, connecting that cohort, so those eighth grades, because then when we get to ninth grade, we have a lot, that class is much bigger even...
If you fail one in eighth grade, there might be, could possibly, might fail one in, yeah, freshman, and so, okay, I didn't try to divert you there, sorry.
Four-year graduation rate at Glendale, last year, 90.9%. And this is figured, there's a cohort starting from that freshman year of students, and then that cohort is an adjusted cohort for that senior year, so they take out the students that transfer, and we bring in the students that do transfer in. So, really, we're looking at... So, really, we're looking at, the cohort at Glendale was 300 students of last year and the adjusted cohort, it was 330. So, so it's 30 students that didn't graduate for that four-year with their cohort.
So, we're looking at this, I mean, you're giving us this context here, but I mean, we could look at those numbers and go, oh, I'm sure we could go, oh my gosh, you're doing great. I mean, when you compare it to, so, oh my gosh, which way are, should we look at this? And like, should we be like, these are pretty average and normal and this is great or should we be going, oh my gosh?
For me, and Dr. Nguyen said this earlier, that really beyond the numbers, it's kids. So, this represents 33 kids that we lost over a four-year graduation cohort. To me, it's like.
So, as a high school administrator and high school teacher, that, that really impacts me.
No good.
Way too many.
No good.
That's not good.
Oh, my gosh.
There are districts that have worse data and there are districts that have better data, but one is too much, so.
That feels like a lot when you say 30 to me.
Yeah.
When you talk about it, kids with that thing versus how many failed at one class, is those are different?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Fair.
And the Hillcrest current reality, so the same information related to the Hillcrest, Hillcrest High School, 24%, which is pretty similar to the Glendale engagement data for freshmen. 61% of the freshman class first semester attended 90% of the time. The first semester failure rate, 35.8%, which is a little higher than the Glendale numbers. That's equaling, their class is 339 students at, at Hillcrest and so that's 121 students for, with the first semester F, F1 or more. The dropout rate, 2.62% and that's equivalent to 10 students for first semester.
For first semester.
First semester. That's this semester.
Of freshman year?
Dropout, yeah, sorry. Four-year graduation rate, 81.3%. So, the cohort, 218 students in that original cohort, the adjusted cohort was 263. So, you're really looking at about 50 students. Yeah.
So, you know that.
Sorry, 200.
The dropout, those kid, if you go back, you said, I remember how many, you said 2.6% and how many kids that was. So, that many freshmen dropped out the first semester of their freshman year?
Yeah.
Now, don't you have to be a certain age?
Yeah, we're confused.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at. That's what I was getting at.
These are already people who have problems if they're a certain age, that age was a freshman dropping out because most kids are sophomores by that age, not freshmen.
Can you help us with that?
If they're able to drop out illegally, then they've had other issues along the way.
Right.
Because that's not normal.
So, how was, and then again, a number of students, what, at the end of their freshman year?
First semester was 10 at Hillcrest, yes. And if you look at dropout data as a four-year pattern, that may not be as surprising if we looked at sophomore, junior and senior class data. It doesn't correlate exactly to 10. Legally, no, but sometimes it's the student doesn't show up, so, and we can't find them.
Right.
We send it to its advisor out. So, that may be part of that draw.
The fact that it's illegal is irrelevant if there's not anything that we can do to stop it.
Right, to find them or catch them.
So, they're not necessarily, I mean, there are probably, there's probably issues that were identified somewhere else along the way, but it's not exclusively that they're repeating their freshman year or something because they just leave and don't come. I'm with you. This is getting really sad. Do you have anything?
I'm sorry, I didn't get that part of the presentation.
No, you did not. No, you did not.
I may have liked to add that part, but it's coming, so, yeah.
You were late to the meeting.
I know it. That's exactly right. I think so. Really, I think, I think sometimes data can mesmerize folks. I think numbers sometimes can do that, but when you break it down, because I, data's probably not my favorite thing because I like to talk about, what are we talking about? People, what are we talking about? Students and what are they doing? So, I think it makes it real. And we know that, we know that there are things we need to address at the high school level, that high school is very complex and it's difficult to maneuver, especially for those freshman students coming in. So, the brighter part of the presentation and the how, that kind of leads back to Dr. Dublin to let you see some opportunities that we want to engage students with.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. I didn't intentionally do that, give her the bads. I look good, but.
Yes, you did.
Maybe I did, yeah. But this is the part that, so she kind of set us up for the why, right? This obviously starkly gives our, some of our challenges, but now what do we do about it? How do we address some of those challenges? And we feel like freshman academies is a piece of that. The first three hexagons, if you will, on the slide that you see, you'll recognize as some of the themes that came out of our Imagine SPS process. So, teacher-student relationships being so important, connecting kids to a purpose in smaller learning communities and how we think we would like to do that and what this pilot is about is doing that through freshman academies in the fall of '18. So, our next few slides, talking about the how. We have quite a team here tonight to talk about how we've gone about planning and designing our freshman academy and who has been involved. So, I'm going to introduce Dr. Caldwell. She's going to step up and then Mr. Moore after her and they're going to talk about their teams that have been engaged.
I'm making Gary come on up with me.
My voice is gone, so.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to, yeah, we're going to tag teams a little bit.
Now they pick it up.
Oh, they know. Well, I think in June, when we were here, we talked to you a little bit about why we decided and kind of some of the things that we did at our sites to make this move to say we want to be a part of the freshman academy. And so, where we are now and one of the things that Dr. Dublin mentioned about that relationship piece and really wanting kids to be excited, we also want our staff to be very excited. So, a couple of things that we both have done that are very similar is we just threw it out to our staff and said, who wants to be a part of the freshman academy? And we had overwhelming responses at both of our schools. And so, we have 15 teachers at Glendale High School who are absolutely 100% on board with being a part of the freshman academy and being a part of this smaller learning community. And they are working very hard this spring to plan and make some really awesome, exciting learning opportunities available for our freshmen that they're going to begin day one in August. In fact, our, we're going to begin even earlier. We've had, I know Gary's already had an orientation that he's going to talk to you about here in a few minutes. We have not had our orientation with parents and students yet. We've had our, all of our eighth-grade students come over and talk to them about the academy, but we have not had the opportunity at Glendale yet to fully explain to parents, yes.
I'm waiting for you to finish your sentence and then.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Well, when you asked that question, how many of you would like to be involved in this? Did you have in your mind the number of people you needed to have or wanted to have to participate in, in the first round?
Based on numbers of what, you know, knowing kind of traditionally what we get, number of freshmen, yeah, we kind of knew how many teachers we would need to, to be a part of freshman academy. We didn't have to go out and recruit at all, so.
So, that's the point I'm trying to hone in on here, that 100% of the people who are participating are people who wanted to be a part of this.
Absolutely.
I just think that's important. I am someone who went on the trip and saw this and I also think that the parents who asked those questions, those were dynamite questions. So, I hope that we will include answers to them as we go. I tell my colleagues all the time who didn't go, I'm telling you, this is something you needed to see. It's, I'm not saying it's for everyone, but I do really appreciate that because one of the things that people say is, oh, we're bringing people kicking and screaming. No or not, you had 15 people who raised their hand and wanted to do this. I'm really excited to hear that.
I have a teacher here tonight that's going to talk to you in just a few minutes about that as well.
I wonder if I met them on the bus when I went on this trip.
No.
Okay, well, I'm in to meet someone new, but that's a really good point, that we're not bringing people kicking and screaming.
Right.
We're letting people choose.
We've had really great buy-in and you can see by the slide, my team of teachers is far, far more than 15. We kind of started and I think some of my teachers talked to you in June about being excited about moving forward with the model and they were kind of our steering committee and then that number has just grown exponentially at Glendale for the number of teachers who are on board and excited about becoming a part of this process.
My, my teachers know because they just, they know the data that you just saw, okay? We are well aware of that data. What you didn't see up there is the transition from freshman to sophomore. We put our reading intervention programs and things in because our English 1, English 2 scores for the last three cohorts went up 20% on EOCs. That's not part of this. That was taught to them during their freshman year, which now during this academy time, we can even focus on their reading skills more because, because we have that embedded in the academy time or the seminar time. So, our teachers are well aware of that. They know that not everybody is, is a college-bound student, that a lot of kids that are ninth graders don't even know what careers are out there and we discussed that in June. So, the whole purpose of this is a, is a transition to the high school. It's to give them an idea of what college or career can offer a student and then just to, you know, let them be high school kids. And, you know, it's a .5, it's a half a credit. I'm, I'm, I'm inter 20 net with a skills class, so I can embed that reading in there for them. And, you know, we're looking at the smaller communities being a way that we can really address our students' needs even more because you've got 150 kids who have the same five teachers on each team that can meet together with them to maybe stop this dropout or the kids who are in trouble before that ever happens.
One of the things that, I'll just get this out really quick, Jill, I'm sorry. One of the things I think we're most excited about, I think a lot of emphasis and attention has been given on the freshman seminar course and all of this, but I think the thing that at this high school level that we're so excited about in this smaller learning community is that our teams of teachers are going to have collaborative planning time together and we've worked with a master scheduling person to come in and kind of show us how to make that happen at the high school level because, as you know, scheduling at the high school level is extremely difficult. It is a challenge. And so, to find common planning time for this group of freshman academy teachers is quite a feat in itself to do. But the fact that these teachers are going to have common planning time and have the expectation that they are going to meet at least weekly together as a team to talk about all of the kids that are on their team, super powerful. I know you're used to hearing about that from our middle school folks because that's kind of how they, they run their middle schools, but we have not done that at the high school level. And so, a lot of attention has been given to the seminar, but to me, that's really not the most powerful piece. That's a great way to introduce kids to high school and to let them know about all the opportunities that they can take advantage of during their four years in high school. But the real power for the engagement piece and the relationship piece is going to center around the collaboration that the teachers do. So, sorry.
No, that's great. One thing I hope you will address that came up in the parents' question tonight and that I hear regularly, my children bring me home questions that everybody's saying about this. And we have to own that we haven't done a great job of putting this out and we're working to fix that now. Is there some truth to this? You only get to take some subjects and you won't be, you won't be able to take Spanish or you won't be able to, I would like you to address that because I think people need to hear our plans for education around that.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not necessarily an easy question, but all you have to do is look at the math. In our schedules, we have 32 credit hours during the school day. And so, we're talking about a freshman seminar class that's a half a credit that we're asking students to take their freshman year. And then, you all have not approved anything above and beyond that, but we have great ideas and plans for what, how we would like to proceed. And so, at most, we would be talking about four credits, four high school credits out of.
Total.
Total, out of 32.
One per year.
And would it be like you wouldn't have any opportunity to take the arts or things like that?
Absolutely not.
On an eight-block, they have the advantage of, or they, they can take two to three electives per year.
And how does that compare to how many you can take now?
The same.
Okay, I just want, that's the kind of information I want people to know.
Out of 32 credits right now, 17 and a half of those credits are elective credits. So, there is a lot of opportunity and, and I personally want to thank you for supporting the block schedule because if it were not for the block schedule, we would not be able to offer all of these elective opportunities. If we were on a seven-period day, that wouldn't be happening and I could understand maybe some anxiety at that point if we were on a seven-period day. But our school board has been supportive of a master schedule at the high school level that is obviously more expensive to run and so, thank you for that. But because of that schedule, we are still able to offer multiple opportunities for our kids to be involved in really whatever, whatever they want to be involved in.
And will continue to be able to.
And will continue. We are absolutely 100% behind our fine arts programs, would never want to do anything to minimize that. You guys know I have Teacher of the Year, not only for Springfield Public Schools, but for the state in orchestra. I would never want to take away from Andy Johnston's orchestra program and this will not take away from his program or any other fine arts program. I don't mean to single him out. It's his being the most important. I just use that as an example. But still, plenty of opportunity, plenty of opportunity.
Help me with the math. I, I agree and, and I, I understand and I absolutely am committed to the notion that it is not intended to limit student choice, but intent is one thing, impact is something else entirely. And if there are at least potentially four limitations, if, if this is done for all four years, so the students are not going to have the equivalent choice, that's not to say they won't have choice, but they can't have equivalent choice or scheduling gets more complicated, right, for them. Because one of the reasons we, we have supported launch is students have already trouble scheduling all the stuff they would like to do. So, this is, I'm not saying this is a good thing or a bad thing, but it makes it more complicated. So, have you planned for that?
Sorry, let me step in real quick. So, and you addressed this very well. So, the freshman academy is half and the fourth we're talking about would only be beyond that if we even went there. So, again, all we've been approved for is a freshman academy, subject to board approval to expand. So, I don't know how much we're going to talk about that.
I think we'll all let you go ahead and present.
I was going to commit to not asking any more questions.
I'll address some of that, yeah.
It's only half a promise.
About the smaller learning community, since we've had those, doesn't, you told us that, every middle school, do they have that? Does every middle school?
That's not a question for me.
And, and we have been, you have data to show that successful at middle school because we have, I mean, I know they're a team. I don't know every middle school, but I know certain middle schools have teams and they have a common planning time, but it's only three or four teachers on a team.
That'll be the same for us.
It would be the same. You bet you would do the same thing.
So, for instance, at Glendale, we'll have three different freshman teams.
Okay. Hundred kids.
150 kids.
About 150 kids on a team.
So, on one day for us, they would have a common academy planning time. Their other planning day would be a common content time.
Yeah, because they don't want to lose their content planning time also based on everybody teaching the same thing. The smaller learning environment always means to me smaller class size. Now, that's not what this means.
No.
It means those teachers are working with the same kids. It's still, smaller learning environments always equate to class size. And as we use this term, I've got to keep pushing that aside. This is not about, this is about the fact you have 300 and some freshmen, and they have common teachers, but they don't have common planning time now.
Correct.
So, they can't. So, you don't need about, you need about math, but you don't need about kids in that part.
Correct.
And this is, I think, just a nuts and bolts question. Are the teachers who have signed on either initially or come on board since that time, are they equally dispersed according to discipline? You've got X number of math teachers, X number of science, X number of music, theater, social studies.
Well, it's core. We're just talking about the cores.
Talking about the four core classes and a seminar teacher. So, five teachers on each team.
And the seminar teachers may come from any of the above?
Yes.
So, for the sake of, I guess it's almost bedtime for somebody.
Yes.
Oh, yes, sorry.
You guys want to call it off?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and I've got Courtney Dameron with me. She, some of the board members may know her from Nashville, but she just kind of wanted to talk about how that Nashville visit changed her perspective.
Are you talking about me? I hear you whispering about me.
It's all good, though.
We're talking about collaboration and design. That's where we're at on this slide.
So, I spoke to you guys this summer about my excitement for Hillcrest having the opportunity to have a new program. You guys saw the numbers. We need something that we can get the kids going, that we can get them to graduation. So, I was able to go to Nashville with many of you this fall, and I had a lot of the same questions that I've been hearing a lot of people say. As a practical arts elective teacher, I was also concerned about where am I going to fit, where are my programs going to fit? So, I came back with a lot of answers, and I kind of went back to my colleagues at Hillcrest and said, "Everybody calm down. It's going to be great. This is what our kids need. This is going to be something that is going to help them towards graduation. It's going to give them that common goal and a focus." So, some of the things I saw in Nashville that I told my colleagues about were fine arts programs that were, you know, excelling. We were actually greeted at one of the schools by a large band that played for us as we walked in. So, I didn't see any fine arts programs that were lacking. I didn't, I saw when I went through the hallways, the art classes and things like that. I saw the practical arts classes, the back classrooms that I was looking for. We also had some students who were kind of their ambassadors, they called them, and they gave us tours of the classrooms and of the school. And so, I really wanted to talk to them, "What do you guys think about this?" And they loved the program. They loved the concepts of it. Part of that smaller learning community, something that really stood out to me that one young man said was, "My teachers are all best friends," which I thought was just the coolest thing, that they're probably not all best friends. But the fact that he had this vision of his teachers being a team that spoke to each other and liked each other and were on the same side, really spoke a lot about the smaller learning community model of this. He also told me that he really identified as being a part of his academy, that he was in the law academy, but that they kind of saw that as a part of their spirit and who they were and their identity at the school as well. So, that was kind of encouraging to see that they took ownership of that as well. So, I went back to Hillcrest. I told everybody about this and that they should be excited that what's really what we've already got going on. We already have electives classes that help kids kind of focus on a career. We already have that in place. But we're just going to be restructuring it so that as the teachers, we can be meeting together to focus on certain students, that our electives are a little bit more purposeful, that we can show kids these different pathways, that we're not trying to say, "Okay, this is what you have to do, but here are some opportunities." And so, take a couple of classes in high school that can show you these different opportunities. So, now we're in the planning phase of it, and I'm really excited to start getting those pieces together so that hopefully we can move on to that part after the freshman academies are successful. So, Kyle Thompson is going to talk next. He's at Glendale, and he's a part of the planning process of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I am Kyle Thompson, and unlike, I think Natalie kind of alluded to it earlier, I have not been on a visit and have not seen this. I think I'm pretty much here, and I don't know why I'm nervous, because on enthusiasm alone. I am totally on board and behind this 100%. But before I get into that, I just want to kind of tell you where we're at at Glendale right now. Actually, tomorrow, our freshman academy is going to get together, and we are doing a lot of the problem-based learning, the project-based learning, the themes, the curriculums, and we're working together. And I know we talked a little bit about how there's five, you know, five-person teams within these academies, but we're actually getting together right now, and between the 15 of us, we're picking different themes, and we're going to collaborate on all of them and share all of them, so we all know what we're doing at what time to make sure that we're maximizing our time with our students. And our first day, we've already gotten our mission statement down, which is what the other academies are doing, our mission statement, our vision, our commitments, our commitments to our students, to each other, to the academies. And that was done the first day, which, again, we are kind of pioneering this whole entire process for the other academies and the other teachers that are going to be following. I can tell you right now, for me, my excitement and within my department, with the people that are part of the freshman academy, we get together alone like once a week and just talk about it, and talk about the curriculum and the things that we can do to advance. And I guess why I'm so excited about it is because my history, I've seen this in action, I've seen this work on a much smaller scale. I'm from Wisconsin, this is my third year here at Glendale, and when I was up in Oshkosh West, it was a high school in Oshkosh West, we had the collaborative learning time together, or like where we'd talk about students. We had the collaborative planning time where we'd talk about math. We gave common assessments, and to the point where they took their pre-algebra classes away, like we're going to try to take foundations away, and had all the students at just the algebra level, because we were catching more and more students because of our communication and because of the time that we could spend to innovate and be on the same page. We did problem-based learning on a regular basis, okay? And I guess I kind of look at it like this, you know, we have a great thing going here already at Springfield, but I want to take it a step further. I want it to be groundbreaking if I could. I mean, I like when you see the engagement numbers and how low they are with students, and they learn better when they're more engaged, you know? And to me, you know, you can have bells and whistles, like play Jeopardy games and things like that where they don't focus on the content, but why don't you put it towards like, I don't know, the community involvement? Or, I mean, just different things that I had in mind were like, when students look at their phones and they talk about decoding and different things like that, there's algebra, I'm a math teacher, there's algebra behind that that they have no idea is going on, and things that are necessary for them to do. And with this, we're actually applying things that I think is going to be completely innovative and catching them at a much lower level. So, I think, and I just want to address one thing, Mr. Lee, that you were talking about earlier, with that 16.9%, you're talking about the students that, you know, it could be a common theme of them coming up in the middle school level. It could be something the transition makes it more difficult. But that's kind of the point of us collaborating with these students, is that no matter what the issues are, we are a unified front to catch these issues, and hopefully those percentages will go down. So, as someone who's been a part of something on a smaller scale, I can tell you right now, I'm going to go on visits, I'm going to be a part of this. I am looking forward to this, and whatever I need to do to make it work, I'm on board. And so, I appreciate Dr. Columbo for giving me this opportunity, and she's going to take over right now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Now, for really the stars tonight, we, first I'd like to thank Greg Kemper and Chrissy Goodstow. Greg is my CSI at Glendale, and Chrissy is going to be the, is our sophomore counselor this year, but is going to be the freshman counselor. And with their help, we were able to put together a team of students from Hickory and Persie to come and talk a little bit about what they're excited about with the academy. And so, I'd also like to really thank the parents, because they've been here since we asked them to be here at six. And so, they've been here, and so I just can't tell you enough how much I appreciate you having your kids here for us tonight. But I have Cody and Annie from Persie, and Hannah and Josh from Hickory. So, I told them just to all come up together, because I think, thought that would make them feel more comfortable. So, they're just going to get up and talk about what they're excited about, what they know about the academies, and I'm just going to turn it over to them.
So, I'm going to go first. And a reason that I like the freshman academy is because it's a project-based learning, and with project-based learning, you get to know your classmates better, and it makes learning the subject more interesting, and it also makes it more hands-on learning. And I think Cody has more to say about hands-on learning.
So, like he said, it gets you more interactive with your teachers and your classmates, and it seems like, I don't know how to explain it, but you learn more, and it's more fun for everyone.
Okay. And then, I am excited about this because it's putting a purpose to your learning. Like, you're not just learning algebra, you're learning it through the course that you want, or not the course, the career you want to take. So, like at Glendale, they'll have medical, a medical career, business law, and construction. And so, we can choose those when we get older and learn, like, we'll learn what we want to learn basically through kind of like the career. So, yeah, I think Annie has more on that.
Yeah, kind of how Hannah was saying, it's good because it gets students thinking earlier about their career paths, so they have an idea earlier on what they want to do with their lives, and they're not. It opens up the doorways to kind of what ideas are out there that they didn't know were out there before, and like, different job outlooks for them in the future.
I think that's it.
Thank you. Shall we set them free?
Well, I was going to say, would it be okay with you if I...
Oh, yes. Thank you all.
Thank you for hanging out.
Yeah, it's getting late.
Getting even more interesting from here.
I figured you might have homework. Thank you, guys.
Oh, so, we're actually not on that slide yet. We still have parent orientation. That's okay, I got it right here, but I didn't want anyone to think that we were not where we were supposed to be. So, for our parent orientation, Gary's already had his mine scheduled for February 27th. We both had our eighth-grade student groups come over where we did talk to our students briefly about academies. I think that you probably understand that having 400-plus eighth graders in a gym, it's really kind of hard to explain the freshman academy in that setting. So, we gave them a very brief overview, sent them home with a little bit of literature, mainly to announce our parent meetings that were coming up. So, I'm going to let Gary talk about his parent meeting, because he's already had his and I have not.
And basically, I just went over what we were presenting with the freshman seminar class. We listed, because high school is going to be new to these parents as well. One of the main things that they don't understand is that in middle school, there's not credits, and in high school, there is. So, we go through the credit process. But we went over the freshman seminar class, and, you know, part of this is a transition of probably the first four to five weeks of just transition to high school, how to study, get things down in your calendar, meet with these teachers, to form relationships with them, finding out about the kids, what they're interested in. Then we have a portion probably through January, that's career and college orientation, to what different careers are out there. We do, and we're in the midst of writing that curriculum here in February, but, you know, presentations, doing presentations, doing research about different careers, seeing if you're interested. One of the things that we've heard, Natalie and I have heard, is that, "Oh, if we go on with this second stage, they have to be in a certain academy." Well, no, they don't have to be in a certain academy. And they can choose to switch academies once they're there, too. So, you know, so they're not, they're not linked into that one-size-fits-all type of thing. Plus, you're only talking one class per year. You know, I know we're talking about freshman, but if you look at the others, it's only one class per year, so three classes for sophomore, junior, senior year. So, it's not that big of a thing. And a kid can find out what he likes or what he doesn't like, okay? There's things that, you know, I thought I really wanted to get into accounting, I can't stand adding numbers, you know? So, things like that. So, we just went over that. One of the things that I've done with the parent orientation, Natalie's not been with me, I've met with some businesses with SRC, 3M, about the career jobs they have that are not college-related. And so, at Hillcrest, our numbers, and I shared this in June, that 47% of our kids are college-bound, 53% are not. So, they need to learn a career, and they need to know what's out there for a career. So, that's one of the big selling points for our staff, was to teach these kids the skills that are needed for these careers that are out there. NCAC Coalition, Tammy Quinn from Glendale, myself, and Jane McCann, one of my counselors, are a member of the NCAC Coalition, which is the National Career Academy Coalition. There are about 40 people. This is an inaugural year. These are people that are in academies all over the U.S., Hawaii, Florida, Oklahoma, all over. And we meet about four to five times a year, in person or on a webinar, to discuss academies and how things work, what did you do? It's a sounding board, it's inquiry-based, so we're constantly looking at ways of doing things better within that. We're helping our colleagues out, giving them ideas how to do things differently as well.
Okay, now we're ready for the next slide.
May I ask one more question? It's so little. If you are a kid who goes to Hillcrest or Glendale, is it compulsory that you participate in the academy program?
Every, for the 10, 11, 12?
No, for freshmen, yes.
Yes, everyone does.
Everyone's going to take the half-credit?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So, they are exposed to it, and then after that, now answer the question as to after the half-credit?
That depends on you.
Because if we haven't approved it, there's no plan for the future of taking a baby step?
Right.
Okay. That's all for now.
And so, I think you know that we've been working with Dr. Steele. Dr. Steele came and spent some time with our staffs. He came to Glendale for a day, went to Hillcrest for a day, and really talked to our staff about the standards for the academy model, where he did provide the Career Academy Coalition standards overview. And that really was just a set of guiding principles that if you're going to jump into this, you need to make sure that you have these things. It's very, I don't know, I think that's very smart to have some guiding principles that guide us.
There's 10 guiding principles.
Yes, go ahead, you can jump in. Gary's probably more well-versed in this than I am.
There are just 10 guiding principles to help you structure the academy to be successful.
And then, we also spent, and I alluded to this earlier, spent some time with a master scheduler that's very experienced in the teaming concept and how to make that happen within our massive master schedules at the high school level. And so, those are some things that we have already done. And like Gary said, February 5th and 6th, we are going to be really honing in that freshman seminar piece. We have some highly effective teaming training that's coming up for all of our teachers that are a part of our freshman academy, just really looking at protocols for looking at student work and how to function as a team, just really just kind of making those teams gel so that we're highly effective and efficient when we start our work together with our students. So, before we turn it back over to Shane, can I just say I really appreciate the support of our high school colleagues, Kelly, Lisa, and Eric that are here from our other high schools to support us tonight. Thanks for being here tonight, I really appreciate it. And I think it's Shane's turn again.
Yes. So, the last point on this slide that I want to mention is that we are starting to build some community partnerships. First has been with the Chamber of Commerce. Early on, we engaged with Lindsay Hames and Matt Morrow to kind of start talking about this, what we may be doing. And so, Lindsay is here tonight, I want to introduce her. You guys probably know Lindsay Hames, and she's with the Chamber, and also works with GoCaps, and is going to talk a little bit about how they've been engaged and...
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Well, thanks, Dr. Lublin. Thanks also to you all for being able to be here tonight and share a little bit about my role. I've been invited to many, a couple of meetings, and it's been really exciting to see what's happening. It's exciting to see the enthusiasm that isn't just here tonight, it's been present in these meetings as well. A little bit about my background, I work for the Springfield Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm the Vice President of Workforce Development there. And one of the things we do a lot at the Chamber is we bring people together. We bring the business community into our building a lot to talk about what their needs are and what they're thinking about for the future. And bar none, what they're always talking about is their talent. They want to grow, they can't find the workforce, they need to be able to expand, but they can't do it if they can't have a reliable talent pipeline. So, that's what we think about a lot at the Chamber, is how can we build out a robust talent pipeline for our community? How can we ensure that the students that are coming out of our schools have the soft skills to be employable? And things that, I know I'm preaching to the choir about a lot of those types of skills and needs that our community has, and we need to be able to develop that talent pipeline. So, it was exciting to be a part of these early conversations, and I was really happy to be asked to be at the table. I was happy to see OTC at the table as well. And I think it's really important, because one thing Springfield does great is collaborate. We do that really well, and we have a business community who is actively wanting to get involved in what's going on in our education right now. We hear that in our meetings, when we're visiting with employers around the area, they're saying, "What can we do? How can we get involved?" We know that it can't just be looking to the schools, asking them to send us talent ready to go. How can we get and be a part of this conversation? So, it's been really exciting to see some of the early work that's been done in the development phase. We know that the short-term conversation is about, you know, that preparation of those freshmen, getting them on the right track. It'll be exciting to see in the future the decisions that are made around the various industries. I will say that when I was visiting with the consultant early on, everything that they'd been looking at in terms of state and local data for growing industries matches up with what we see locally and what we know our state partners report to us as well. As we think about what we want to prepare students for, we want them to be prepared for jobs that are going to be available for industries that are growing, so that they can find gainful employment, meaningful careers, and family-sustaining wages, and have successful lives beyond high school and college. And so, it's just been exciting to see some of those early conversations around what those pathways might look like, some of those conversations around the soft skill development, conversations around some of those core skills that will continue to be developed through the small learning communities. And just want to say thanks to the team and Dr. Dublin for inviting us to the table, and we are just really excited about the future and want to do what we can to help and we are just really excited about the future and want to do what we can to help bring the business community along in this effort, get them plugged in where they can get plugged in, and certainly just want to be advocates for, for the students that will be participating. So I would be happy to take any questions, but if not...
Thank you very much, Lindsay.
You bet.
Okay, so now, Dr. Win and I believe are gonna bring this thing home with a few remaining points.
We are gonna bring it home. Freshman teams, it was mentioned, a hundred and fifty students approximately on a team, four to five teachers. Mr. Winter, you mentioned high school, a little bit scheduling. I glanced at Denise's eyes real quick. High school student takes, has, depending on the schedule, Glendale would have four different teachers, that could be a semester, and then four different teachers. And those, those teachers collaborate on content during collaboration time, but they don't collaborate on students necessarily because those students are just kind of gunshot across for all teachers. So there's, it's a little bit different for that teaming aspect. Teachers are designing that freshman seminar course, that's been mentioned. Lindsay talked about business partner engagement, that would happen late spring, early summer, and then monitoring measures of success would be continuing that entire semester, starting for two thousand and eighteen, fall semester. What it is, based on models designed for SPS to fit, designed by teachers, that .5 credit class, and also including college and career experiences, and then the important piece that we've talked about is that transition to high school, including that also. What it is not, that's also been talked about this evening, not designed to track, it's flexible, not designed to limit students, we want to encourage those honor students in AP selections, not intended to limit electives, we think those are important, and then not, we also want to encourage it, extra encourage.
Thank you. So I'm gonna talk, I've got a couple slides about how are we gonna measure success of freshman academies. So we've kind of put them in two buckets, if you will, or two areas, one feedback, and the second being performance. So feedback is obviously key to this, we want to get a lot of feedback next fall from our stakeholders as to, is this being successful? So we're gonna get our student engagement feedback, and this will be primarily, because I know your first question will be, well, how are you gonna get that feedback, right? So surveys, which we'll be building, and I'll talk about when we'll do that, focus groups with kids, parents, teachers, forums with parents, kids, teachers, to get that feedback. Obviously, teacher-student relationships, talking to those teachers and students, our relationships being built in these smaller learning communities like we think they're going to be. Our community partner feedback, stakeholder feedback, I mentioned, teacher, students, parents, then increased teacher collaboration, as Natalie and Gary mentioned, that common planning time, is that happening? What's happening during that common planning time? Are they talking about kids? Are they talking about interventions for kids and pushing kids to be successful?
Okay, hold on a second.
Yes, yes.
I presume you'll also be tracking failure rates and drop rates?
Yes, yes.
Because that's where you started, so I presume you'll close with those.
You got it, yeah.
So would you add what you just said to these measures of success?
Yeah, slide. Yep, perform, this, and this is probably what you're asking, so the next bucket that I see is performance, and so we'll be tracking for those freshmen, just like we showed you earlier for that first semester freshman, their dropout rates, their ninety-ninety attendance rates, and their course failure rates. Is that, was that your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, no, go ahead.
Let me, give me just a second. So, let me go back to your measures of success feedback. So student engagement, you're gonna take the Glendale and Hillcrest freshman academy pilot group next fall?
Yes.
And you're going to, how are you gonna measure student engagement?
Yeah, and you'll see, and we're gonna have to build those metric tools, because we currently have the survey that we give in the spring, but that won't work for them, so we're gonna have to give one in the fall to those kids. So we're gonna be building those, it's gonna be a pre-survey and a post-survey possibly, is the way we're kind of talking about those kids. Does that make sense? It's gonna have to be a new tool that we have in.
Okay. So you're not comparing them to any other cohort, just themselves?
At this point, yes.
Okay. And then, and then you, so you've mentioned focus groups, which is just quality of...
Sitting down, yeah.
Forums, surveys?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, your, how are you gonna measure teacher-student relationship? How do we currently measure?
Well, I think, obviously, we partly do that on panorama survey, which is not really relevant to this, because we do that in the spring, I don't know if we can compare that. But I see that as being sitting down with those teachers and those students and saying, are you building relationships? How's that looking? We don't really do that currently, to be honest, other than a few questions on that panorama survey that we give.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, as a board, we need to see some, either pre and post or comparative to other things?
Right.
Because essentially, if we're at the grocery store right now, we're in the produce section, and you're asking us by December eighteenth to check out?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, and so we've gotta have some really clear, and not just checkout, not just checkout for the academy freshman class, but essentially the entire program.
Potentially, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, so we're not just evaluating one particular class, freshman academy. I mean, freshman academy may be a great class to always have.
Yeah, the freshman orientation, we've talked about that.
Without launching an entire academy.
That's fair, that's fair, we've talked about that.
Yeah.
We had a long bus ride, you know? So that's fair.
So, so I'm just going back to, I want to be very clear, and I want our board to be very clear in what are you all saying are our measures of success, pre, post?
Right.
And make sure that those are adequate for this board.
Right.
Because we have a quick turnaround to make a big decision, not just about a class. So you can evaluate a class, but I also need some data, we've got two things going on, we have a class, and then we have an entire program.
Right.
So I'm not even gonna, I'll get to my program question in just a second, but I'm gonna stay focused on this class. So we first need to just stay clear of where are we at with securing the success of this class.
So when we were sitting around, first of all, when we sit around and think, what are the questions gonna be? We thought that one, we thought it might come from you, because you asked the good research questions. So you're absolutely right, this is a quick window. And so we've talked about, is it enough data, frankly, to make decisions?
Yeah, I don't know.
So you're hitting it on the nose, and I, I don't know, but we're going to give it our best shot to collect that data. Now, to answer your questions, what will that specifically be on this?
Student relationships.
That's, again, you'll see the next slide, I think, that we're gonna be building those metric tools, building those surveys, and absolutely, pre and post, but we don't have those yet, because they haven't been built, but that's, that's what we're gonna be doing.
Can I ask it?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So are half the freshmen gonna take this class in the fall, and half in the spring, or all of them are gonna be in the fall?
All of them are gonna be in the fall, because they need that information if we do some forward for scheduling purposes. And so you know that that process starts, like, it's already, it's already started.
Yeah, it's started.
Yeah, so, our intent is for every freshman to have the class in the fall.
Okay, okay. Because you, I mean, you can't, and it's gotta be asked before they finish the class. I mean, I don't see how we could, how you could come back and present to us in January and say, oh, we've got good data. We already, we gotta know, the district has to know that answer before January, just for you to make your schedule.
Right.
I mean, the timeline here just seems...
You're right, it's quick.
Really, just, it doesn't seem workable, but I'm sure you've thought of that, because then, if the answer is yes, which I think everybody thinks is gonna be yes, already...
But we don't know.
We don't know.
Well, you can say that, but I really think most people...
The objective is for it to be yes.
Yeah, that's right. If they, are you, hopefully, you wouldn't be spending all the time, you probably thought if we're not doing this to fail. You wouldn't be coming to us and saying, we just wanna do this one freshman class one time, and then let's just relax at what we've been doing. I, I mean, I just, I don't believe that.
Yeah.
I really believe...
We will have data at Glendale at the end of the first quarter, because of how our schedule currently works, and so...
Half-credit is first quarter, yeah.
Yeah.
So we will have half of our fresh, at least half of our freshmen that have been through freshman seminar by the end of the first quarter.
I have, I think, a similar question to that, and to me, it is an open question, but there, I think there may be two open questions here. And there's a ton of evidence to suggest that first-year student, freshman learning community, small learning communities can work at multiple levels. My experience is at the college level, and they do work. So in some ways, if, we're talking about if, whether this is scalable or not, is it scalable to all other freshman classes in SPS? And then it's a very different question, whether it's scalable over all four years of every high school at SPS. And so I guess my question is, do we have evidence, do we have any good reason to believe today, and we don't have the evidence, of course, that the value added, that seems fairly, pretty clear to me for the first year, do we think the value added is equivalent in the sophomore, junior, and senior year?
Right.
I think those of us who saw it are nodding yes, we were there together, yeah, it looked that way to us, because it maintains engagement when we are obviously losing that over time. That's what Denise is nodding, I see my friends from the trip nodding, it looked that way. We talked to a lot of kids, not just teachers, and it looked that way.
I guess I was, I'm just gonna keep jumping up and down, because I know Shane, you're talking about measures of success, and you're on some of those more statistical type things, and I guess my, all my comments and questions come with a passion for career and college exploration, because that is, if you look at my resume, that's been my entire career, is career and college exploration. I've taught freshman seminar at the college level for over fifteen years, so very familiar with this type of approach at a different level. All that to say is, my questions come with, if we're putting this level of investment, and we're calling it a pilot, then we're truly piloting something before we make a decision to move forward.
Right.
So otherwise, we would just, we'd call it a done deal, we wouldn't call it pilot. It's a pilot. And so in order to ensure our pilot is, is successful, then we have to have a lot of questions to answer.
Right.
Okay, so with that in mind.
Look out.
How many?
Get your pens out.
We need to put a break.
While I believe in visiting a place, which I haven't had a chance to do that, and while you can make snap judgments and have people who are moving forward, because they've only got the shiny bright stars to do that.
I'm gonna pause for two seconds.
Yeah.
I feel bad for our guests.
Yeah.
Some of these guys who are here, if you feel like you want to go, Lindsay, get out of here.
She's like, I'm out of here.
Teachers, if you guys want to go, seriously, I feel bad, because we can...
Absolutely.
Probably talk all night, but I'm feeling if you guys want to get out of here. Don't, don't feel bad. Head out the back doors.
We've had lots of people walk out on us before, we're good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Just felt that was fair to some of them, been here a couple hours, yeah.
I guess I would like to see what the results have the academy programs launched in not just Nashville, but other cities, produce for us to try to solve the problem statement. So the problem statement was all that you shared, that's the problem statement. And I'm sure you explored lots of different ways of solving that problem statement, I'm guessing there was, there's a lot of different approaches to approach re-engagement or whatever. So whatever the team did, I trust our principals and administrators, and they went out and they found this one. So we're running in this direction, I get that. But, but what data, besides we went to field trips and they looked like they were having a great time, and they looked engaged, what data do we know that those school districts who have put these type of programs in place are producing the desired outcomes that we so desperately desire? Do, I have not seen that, and I would love to see that data.
That's a good question, and I don't know that we can answer that right now, but we could certainly pull that, yeah.
Okay, and so, so that's a foundational question that...
See, I don't think, I don't, I don't think Nashville school problems that they were trying to solve is what we're trying to solve here, to the extent they were trying to solve it, but maybe we're trying to prevent getting to where they are. So we're being, I mean, because I couldn't figure out why, when they were saying, well, Nashville sixty percent graduation rate, and, you know, I'm thinking, that's not us, that is not, it's not us, even if you take any school, but at the same time, Carl, your data that we have is not trending in the right direction toward graduation and attending. So rather than go to sixty percent, we would rather, I mean, stop it now at eighty-three or I'm just throwing out numbers, I had way too many numbers tonight, that we would rather stop there than, and start this, rather than have to go where they went and do that.
Yeah, and I might jump in, if you remember back in June, we, we kind of made a distinction that our why is definitely different than Nashville. Our why is student engagement, that's a big piece of it, which we've kind of shown that data, that we do have kids that are engaged. We have kids that are engaged, we also have a lot that aren't, so that's a big piece of the why behind this. So I think it's fair to say, like you said, Nashville looks different than us, and that's, we can't really comparably say that's why we're doing it, same reason why they did it, but...
But we have had, and I've become, I'm not a expert on this, but I really don't, we have had academies in Springfield for five years, and nobody talks about that. I'm not sure why, but we have had them for five years. Now, the difference is they're a choice. You don't have to become, now, everything that I, because I went to a capstone seminar, and I spurred, and then I sat down with the director saying, they, five years ago, they were doing this for the same reason that we had kids graduating from Kinkaboo that were not going on to college, that weren't prepared for jobs, that's, that's why they did it, or that's what I was told. So I'm assuming that, right? So we've had this for five years, and I mean, I'm, I was, they were doing, they're doing job shadowing, they're doing job internships, they're doing capstone seminars, they're, I think about, now, they don't have the freshman class, but they do a hundred and fifty hours of volunteer work, they take classes in their academy area, so I'm thinking, now, if we had this already in Springfield, it just kind of, was it successful? Is it successful? I mean, all I had is one experience, very personal experience, where my grandson went through, and he chose to go through that, and I listened to the capstone seminar, and I was, not particularly, he presented, but others presented, and all of the things that people are saying is exactly what you're trying to do with this, but we've had it here, so, but it's a choice. So I'm getting, and, and I understand always, I really see pride's important. I mean, they graduate with thirty hours, they don't have two years to decide what their major's gonna be, some of them have to decide after a semester.
That's already true.
Or, you know, and they're already in college, so...
That's already true, for pride reasons.
I, I see this, and I, the only thing, but I, I keep moving ahead, because I can't stay where we are with the choice thing, because I just know it's gonna hit us, the timeline's gonna pull us to be able to make that, the decision to go ahead and do that. So I'm, I keep thinking, if we've had this for five years, can't we say it's been successful or it hadn't been? My one experience is, I think this has been, I saw some fabulous things from kids who chose to do it, and there's probably half of them who choose not to do it, and they're, you know, I don't know if they'll be okay or not, but I think they probably will, because we've got middle college, we've got GoCaps, we've got OTC, we've got, I mean, we, there are a lot of resources, and I keep thinking now, are we gonna short-change those based on this?
You mean, will academies replace GoCaps, or will academies replace those things? Is that what you're saying or not?
So you're all asking, you're all asking very intelligent questions about this, and, but I wanted to just back up the train. This is a pilot for, for freshmen, and we recognize the timeline is tight, but I've told this team many times, we're gonna, we're gonna go in a semester, and we're gonna see something amazing, and we're gonna say, yes, let's start an impact study, let's start doing some planning. Or we're gonna say, hey, let's do this a whole year, let's do it maybe two years before we see anything without any advancement to the sophomore, junior, or senior level, and just lock in and say, hey, how's this thing going, before we would ever go to scale? You're right, the first window of opportunity, the first checkout would, could be in December, but it could also be two years from now.
Doesn't have to be.
But we don't, we want you to hear, we have not made that decision, we're not making that recommendation, we are here to say, we believe small learning communities, collaboration, and a half-credit class is worth the investment right now, and this is what, and we... And this is what, and we watched that for a while. We watch it. We're going to come back to you and report to you in December. Hey, this is where we're at right now. And we're going to say, are we, where are we at? But we're going to also be very open to the idea that it could go multiple semesters in just these two schools with nothing past the sophomore, nothing past the freshman year. So we want, because we want to learn and tweak and get better at it. And then we might come back and say, we're ready to scale this as a freshman moment across the system without doing any design to the sophomore, junior, senior. Maybe this is our only moment we're going to do with academies around freshmen. Now, we've seen models that go all the way up, but that may not be our model. And I want to, I want to make sure that we reserve the right to design it the way we want it for our kids.
Mike, I'm really glad to hear you say that, because this is not assuming the outcome of any decision we haven't yet been asked.
Right.
But we don't want to, we don't want to take any more time than is absolutely necessary to make a data-driven, informed, good judgment about scalability or not. We do, however, want to take all the time that is in fact necessary to make that judgment.
That's right.
And again, in the absence of any evidence, I think the value added for the first year for that freshman seminar is probably going to be incrementally greater than it would be for the sophomore, junior, senior. But that's a guess. That's not a data-driven, data-informed thing. So I think hearing that openness to, we'll see where this goes, I think will be important. And the other question I would want to raise is the relative emphasis of college and career readiness. And it's not just what I do for a living. And I think the chamber is an absolutely crucial community partner. I think higher education is also crucial there. And so I think balancing those things in the right kind of way will be important.
Yes.
Because a lot of our students are coming into college with at least one year of college credit already earned. And I certainly would not want to, well, there's a part of me that kind of sort of would not want them to bring that credit already, but in the interest of full disclosure. But they're going to do it, right? They do it, and they're going to continue doing it. And also, I don't think there's going to be any tracking into a particular career field, but we need to be mindful of that subtle pressure, because that's going to change. I mean, heavens, I was going to be pre-med until I had an unfortunate encounter with organic chemistry. And stuff changes all the time, and it's going to change even more dramatically if you're, how old are freshmen? 15?
14.
14, 15?
14, 15.
Oh, good heavens. I don't want to be held accountable for what I thought I was doing when I was 15.
14, yeah. And I think, I appreciate that thought of this, right? Because, and I know the team behind me, and have put all this, have been out studying this, they're very excited. They want to start speculating about the future. But the, and I appreciate their enthusiasm, because I think they see the value add for, in their. But our message has been, we're going to do this one little thing, and we're going to see how it goes. And we may say, this is great for these two sites, and we're going to leave it right there. We may scale it, we may come back to you with other recommendations. So I don't want to, I don't want anybody to think that we are jumping too far ahead. I appreciate the speculation, I appreciate the enthusiasm. But I'm also trying to put it in a box to say, this is where we're at right now.
But don't, don't walk your swagger back too much. I mean, it's not just a little bitty thing. I mean, it's okay to be a really cool.
It is a way cool.
It's bold, it's very bold.
And I can't, I can't thank the principals enough for their leadership in making, driving this, building capacity, building that enthusiasm and that excitement, because that, they are the leaders of the building. And they, and I think Gary said the best, they know that data. They're looking for ways to help solve that data problem around dropouts and apps.
It's an empirical question.
They're trying to figure that out themselves, and they, they've made the decision, this is how we want to, this is the path we want to try to go down.
And I appreciate how you just said that, don't walk your swagger back too much, because we, because there has been a lot of enthusiasm at the site level bubbling up, and we want to encourage that, because they seem that way with this, and they've been excited and done a lot of work. So it's our job to encourage that, yet still manage it, manage it how we're going to show success in some of these questions that pose. I like how you said that.
Don't walk the swagger back until you have evidence that says you need to.
Yeah, right.
And when you do, then do it.
If you do.
So.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes, we're going to, we're, I don't think I need to put this slide up necessarily to have questions, but we'll probably get, I do appreciate your time. I want to thank the team again for being here and for all the support they've had.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Denise?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just.
I'm pretty sure my friend has something to say. She was on the bus with me.
Couple of things. One is having a chance to go. Well, first of all, I want to say to the teachers, and I'm sorry a couple left, but I hope that this has not in any way dampened your enthusiasm. Because I was there with you, and I saw how exciting this opportunity was, especially for, I'm thinking, my home school, GoCaps, and what this means to some of the students, especially with, can you talk about it? There's ten students at the end of the classroom, which makes it extremely sad. But having seen what this did, that happens difficult, many similar students that just were having a hard time finding their way, please, up with anything tonight would dampen your enthusiasm, because I, I look for this to be a very successful project. And moving right on, I hope that that's why, I hope that that's what happens. So we're just being thoughtful, and probably we haven't gotten anywhere you haven't already been in your discussion. And so I want to say that it's very impressive when all five high school principals have been here supporting each other. I know one had to step up, that's okay, we all five were there. And then I did, while in Nashville, had the opportunity to sit through kind of a mock panel discussion in which this team of teachers were at, on the stage, and they were discussing, for example, during one of their common planning times, how they stay on top of their students. Their progress, those of you that were there, remember, on top of student progress academically, retention, their physical, their mental health, their family issues. It was amazing to me, because I thought back to the day when I was teaching, that I had the opportunity. I know that a team of teachers were saying some of the students that we lost. And that was just so powerful, just that aspect of this. So I find it very exciting. I think that some of the data that we're looking at here in collecting in terms of student-teacher relationship, that collaborative planning time, that teachers will be able to collect that in terms of that student. They'll come up with some way to be able to determine that student-teacher relationship. Just if for nothing else, talking to a student that tells you, my teachers are best friends. They hang out together because they talk about me, they talk about us, they talk about our team. So that was, was extremely powerful. And that's the advantage of getting to go and spend two days with a student, a street, and talk to a student. So I'm hoping that my colleagues also get an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, I can't recommend that enough to the four of you guys who have not been to Nashville, because it's an immersive experience, and you get it when you see it, I think. But I do have some other comments, I've written them down, so I'm just going to run through them quickly in the interest of time. You know, one of the things you talked about, Shane, is that this national career academy coalition. And if academy scares anybody, they're really going to be scared by career academy, because that just starts to suggest all kinds of things that, that means that we're trying to steer kids into a thing. I think language is really going to matter a lot on how we roll this out. Again, reminding people what this is and what this isn't. And some of the language around this movement, I think, is unfortunate. We heard, we heard talking about soft skill. I want to second what Denise just said a few moments ago about one of the, one of the many great attributes of the academy model is faculty teams structured around their discipline currently, moving to faculty teams structured around their students. And to me, I saw that as incredibly powerful. That is one thing for, for, and, yeah, I would imagine those who, that's, that's a, that's a game changer, I think, in the culture of high school is, and, and changing that, while that may be a cheese mover for some faculty members, it's a real benefit for the kids.
Who moved the cheese, Stan?
I get that.
And I also think that when we talk about career academies, or whatever better name we've come up with for this, is that it is true that the workforce does, does teach, the work environment does teach soft skills and make those relevant, that you simply cannot get in a core curriculum. You just can't get soft skills in a core curriculum. You can't, Charles.
We'll discuss later.
Charles could argue at different.
Argument for another topic.
Yeah, you can't. At least, I don't think in high school you can. Let's see, can, oh, and I think that, I think that for me, having seen what I saw, having heard what I heard, having seen what I saw in, experienced what I experienced in Nashville, what I heard tonight in this update of just about the freshman academies, that, and to Bruce's point, what we are talking about with the freshman academies and the potential for academies in the following three years, this is an evolutionary approach. This is not revolutionary, not based on what I saw in Nashville. And in fact, it becomes a framework for what really is a series of disjointed portfolios that we already have in place in Springfield public schools at secondary level. And this provides a framework, a more organized framework. As much as I'm interested in measures of success and having some rational measures in place, I'm also interested in measures of failure. Because sometimes a measure of failure is not necessarily low-success numbers. It may be something else. How will we, how will we know we've succeeded, but how will we also know we've failed? And then last, we are seeing tonight why doing something small inside a school like a Kickapoo U is, is easy. Doing it all the way across the district is hard. And that's what we're trying to do. It's, it's hard. But this one is hard for all the right reasons, and I'm ready to go as fast as we responsibly can. But the key word here is responsibly, and how do we know it when we know it? I think, I think when you're doing it small within a building, it just feels right. And there's, and there's a cultural fit, and people just get it. When you try to do that across five high schools in a 25,000-student district, 1,800 teachers, that is, that is some heavy lifting, y'all. But I think, you know, I'm ready to do my part.
The only other thing I want to say, and I know everyone's sick of hearing from me, and I appreciate that. In addition to just reiterating how fun it was to listen to the people on the bus talk about how excited they were, they're the experts, and they were so excited about this model. I am committed to two things. One, you know, I'm looking at my children's very first choir teacher in this room tonight. I am very committed to my children who are, I mean, before they were even out, barely out of diapers. There she, I, I'm very committed to making sure we continue to have arts. My older daughter just finished an art class in her high school that is better than any art class I ever took along the way. I will not stand for this removing what I believe to be a broad educational experience for our kids. I will never stand for that. But more than that, whether you agree or disagree with the level of enthusiasm that the three of us have who were there with our colleagues, who we are impressed, man, their relationship with each other is super cool, too. Whether you're taken by that or you're not, keep coming and keep asking questions. I am not daunted by the questions. You should be asking questions. Again, we should have done a better job. We're going to continue to do a better job. They want to answer your questions, and we want people to be skeptical. I don't appreciate being told that I just was falling for the flashy stuff, because I wasn't. I'm a skeptical person. But keep asking questions. This is really important. But we don't do things small on this board. This is a larger school district in the state. We're not going to just start it at Hillcrest. We're going to figure out what we can do to engage all of these kids. But please, keep asking questions, because I think that's important. That's all now. Maybe.
Anything else?
Oh, my daughter got a medal tonight in the swim meet that I missed being here with you all. Go Kickapoo.
Okay. Thank you, guys. The last hour and a half. Good presentation, good questions, good discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on, for those of you who are still here. Cabinet report. Start with Steve or start with Karen?
I'll start this off. My screen just acknowledged, the governor, technology that Governor Gardens did release, the school year 19 budget from the Office of Administration. And the proposal that has been released indicates an 87 million increase for K-12 funding. Based on our current calculations and retaining flat ABA and no changes to thresholds, that would equate to an estimated approximately $989 million for Springfield public schools. And with that in the context for you, that would be 0.38 of a percent of our operating budget. So we will continue to watch this process unfold, as many layers of review and determinations to be made yet through the legislative process, and we'll stay in tune with that. So we'll keep you apprised.
And I can just one comment. One of the concerns I had that wasn't in there that concerns a little bit is, as most of you know, with fully funding means triggers early childhood opportunity. Money to fund that is not in this budget.
That is correct.
So while it may get triggered, there's no money to fund it. Now, I'm not saying that's going to stay through the process, but in the governor's budget, it did not fund the early childhood, which they said we will start July 1. He has $42 million, something like that. So maybe we'll put it back, but we'll see.
I have 72 items.
You get to.
Well, then I have 76.
You get to talk about 71 of my beers.
I, I put your attention to the newsletter did a really nice article on Yujima, which is kind of a literacy initiative, and I know Dr. Davis here earlier. I had the privilege to go, and Stephen and I both went to engage in this really nice neighborhood association coming together with the Bartley Decatur Center, wraparound services, so I wanted to highlight that. That was a great event. Two, we, Dr. Anderson's not here, but we had the privilege of hosting Good Dads, which is an organization in the community now. And we have Good Dad Huddles in school. We started with about eight and about 20 now. And we had the captains in for breakfast, and they were able to share our appreciation for what they're doing to have good dads in our schools and engaging with their kids and showing them just how proud they are of their kids. So I think we want to do that partnership. Three, had the privilege to go to, most, many of us had the privilege to go to Parkview on Saturday for the archery tournament. Dana, who was here today, I saw her throw. I was trying to do the calculation in my head how many arrows were on Parkview on Saturday. I couldn't do that calculation. But they were there 10 hours straight with kids coming in every half hour to shoot arrows with this tournament. So over 600 participants, great engagement between the kids who have normally not been engaged. So thank you for your support for that. The fourth one is, I wanted to congratulate Andy Johnson. He's the orchestra teacher in Glendale. The Springfield Youth Symphony was selected to be the feature performance at the Missouri Music Educators Association, and that'll be at Tanter's tomorrow night. It is a highly selective moment to be recognized and to be featured. And so I want to congratulate them, and we'll be there in attendance to support them also. And then lastly, on your desk area, we gave you an Explore Guidebook, and want to let you know that these will be going home with our students on Friday, and registration starts on February 7. And I'm so glad to hear from my colleague that we already have three hundred employees going down that path. So we know it'll be a great event for our kids, so thank you.
I have only one.
One very quick follow-up, Dr. Taylor, to your question regarding the early incentives. 56 or 78% of those are retirements, so we have 16 resignations. And half of those 16 were due to relocation.
Thank you. She's quick.
And just a quick update from the communication side. We are in the process of doing a soft launch of the new SPS.org. So if you've not yet checked out the new homepage of our website, I'm urging you to do so. It's a work in progress. It's a soft launch right now at the homepage, and we are working with department heads to update each department's webpage. But I do want to give a shout-out to Bruce Douglas and the Information Tech. But I do want to give a shout-out to Bruce Douglas and the information technology team, Teresa Bledsoe, Pam Bodine, and Ben Loubrin, we're really leading that effort and that process and doing that moving, and then good department heads that are working to update the site. So great things are happening there, and we will be focusing on rolling out SPS.org a little bit more aggressively as this semester progresses and those department sites are updated. Beyond that, and we'll have a booth celebrating 150th birthday of Springfield Public Schools at the Salute to Legislators in Jefferson City tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that. Also, just wanted to highlight Dr. Juncamino's trip to Dominican Republic, had kind of an interesting opportunity through social media. He saw questions from SPS students, and those students asked about his trip, his experience, what he would be doing while there on the mission trip, and he was able to engage with them on social media via Facebook Live, which I thought was a very fun way to make that experience relevant to our students here, and he plans to continue that effort for a turn. So that was very exciting. Then finally, just our ongoing efforts to tell our positive stories proactively, had some really good wins recently, archery, an amazing thing, 700 students across our district participating in that new program. KY3, KSPR, Elder 10, and the newsletter has featured those efforts at the tournament that happened. KY3 has also done a great job of featuring the transportation and facilities team and the amazing work that they did to make sure our buses and our facilities were ready to go, students coming back in really cold temperatures, amazing work there. Our old school, they did a great feature on a student, a young lady who was very timid about her math skills until she went through the whole program, and now is excelling in math, wants to become a marine biologist, that was a great story. Finally, they did a great piece on Jared and a wildlife and outdoors program. Students finished that program and are equipped with First Aid CPR and Hunter Safety Certification. That was featured by KY3. And then finally, KRDK did a great feature on the expansion of the breakfast in the classroom program to Carver, and now all of those students are able to have nutrition first thing in the morning free of charge. So just some recent ones there, and I want to thank the com team and to all the spokespeople in districts who make that work possible, because you have to be flexible to get people in to be able to tell the story, and I'd be very appreciative of people making that happen. So, thank you.
Any questions for Cabinet? I know the archery participation has somewhat been a benchmark across the state. People are talking about it all over the state about having 700 kids participate in that.
Unbelievable.
It means it's just, how do you get that many kids, I mean, out of, the percentage of kids participating is just ridiculous. I mean, great, but it's incredible, so. And they like it, which is more important. Okay, or just as important. Any other questions for them, for the Cabinet? Okay, legislative update. Denise, you want to say anything?
We can put that off till tomorrow since we're all getting up to go.
There's a whole lot of stuff going on up there, how about that?
I accept, I accept that.
Let the record reflect.
Couple of scholarly ones, but they're all.
We got to end this before you keep talking.
Yeah, well, I, two of them are really kind of, I'll just talk about two of them because you won't get a chance to talk to them, it's going on, probably. They're trying to move the election date for board members to November, and change the term to four years. So there's a lot there. Don't ask me why.
That shouldn't be in November.
So, or it politicizes the board, the process.
Exactly, and that's why they shouldn't do it, no.
So I'm just saying, that's out there, and there's another one out there that has, proposes to limit board members and staff from lobbying.
I'm in.
On, on funds. And so, lobbying efforts to go up until we, we can't go up and talk to legislators to do that.
That's a free speech issue.
On, on school boards.
Pass dime, basically, on judicial.
District dime, so. I don't know that they'll ever go anywhere, I'm just telling you those two are out there. I know, I know. So, I'm going to go through all the list of stuff. Okay. Because it's nine o'clock. I know, I thought that would make you laugh. Okay, board comments, any comments anybody wants to make?
I'll just say quickly, I think I mentioned it earlier, but MSBA Board and Directors met Friday and Saturday, so, there were representatives on the board.
Thank you.
Basically, we went through just some MSBA business on Friday, and Saturday was a full day of hard work writing a mission statement. And I wrote so many mission statements, but it's hard work, and especially when you have representatives throughout the state, everyone has a little bit different idea of what the mission of, not necessarily the school board, but what the Missouri State School Board or the directors want to be. And we all know basically our purpose is for kids, you know, the academic, well, the wellbeing, education of students, but everyone kind of has a different take on it. So it was a lot of really hard work, and I was retired at the end of the day.
Thank you for recording.
You're welcome.
Any other board comments? Okay, upcoming meetings, tomorrow, salute the legislature in Jeff City, so hopefully everybody, I don't know who all's going up, but great opportunity to meet and mingle with the legislators, to do that. Okay, plus deltas, if you got any plus deltas, please put them up there, if you've got some. We do need to go in executive session, and I would take a motion at the board meeting executive session, following this meeting, there's this legal real estate and personnel matters as provided in section 61021, section 123, and 13.
Some of it.
All right, so, okay. Who, Denise?
It is Alina.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alina and Charles, second. Alina and Charles. Turned your computer off, didn't you?
No, it's just a little slow.
Okay, thank you for long meeting, thank you, those who are here, for lasting this long.